This is the Wednesday, December 15th, 2022 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Good afternoon. Please call the rollmaker.
Maps?
Here.
Rubio?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Hardesty?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The city council is holding hybrid meeting, public meetings with in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance. If you wish to testify before counsel in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance by visiting council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony resolutions, reports, or first readings of ordinances. Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time when testifying. Please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you're a lobbyist. If you're representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, counsel may take a short recess and reconvene virtually.
Very good. Thank you. Our first item this afternoon is item 1066. It's a Hastings item.
Ah, I got it.
The history professor.
Well done.
Good. Excellent. Thank you.
Accept report from the City Arts Program.
I am pleased to jointly introduce this item with Commissioner Rubio, who is the commissioner in charge of the city's arts and culture portfolio and liaison to the Regional Arts and Culture Council. We're joined this afternoon by City Arts Program Manager Jeff Hawthorne and creative laureate Joaquin Lopez, who will present the report for the City Arts Program. Artists, art organization, and arts-related businesses are obviously a very important part of our community's identity and essential to our recovery efforts. Today, Jeff will walk us through where the city has invested in arts and culture and what the impact of those investments have been. Thank you, Jeff and Joaquin, for being here today. I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Rubio, but first I have to point out that the light on your iPhone is on and it will burn out really quickly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to serve as liaison to arts and culture for the city of Portland. And as you'll hear in Jeff's report, the City Arts Program was initially established in 2018 to oversee the city's contract with the Regional Arts and Culture Council and to ensure the services are aligned with this contract and also more broadly, our arts and culture portfolio here at the city. And over the past two years, my office and I have collaborated very closely with the City Arts Program, not only to explore our city's relationship to arts and culture, but also our contract holders and ensure that we are on the right track with our arts stakeholders. We've engaged council offices to develop arts policy and expand our support for arts and culture through direct investments and collaborations across city bureaus. I'm most excited about the cultural planning process that we have just launched to assess the state of arts and culture in our city and to develop a bold new vision for the next generation of arts and culture throughout the region. Our work together has illuminated a need for increased capacity in the arts program, which will now have two new positions: City Arts Policy Advisor and Council Liaison and the Arts Education Coordinator. I am extremely thankful for the support of my colleagues for expanding the city arts program capacity. My hope is that to institutionalize roles in the city that prioritize arts policies and projects in the long term to align with the cultural planning process. With that, I will turn this over to the City Arts Program Manager Jeff Hawthorne and our special guest, one of the city's two creative laureates, Joaquin Lopez.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, Mayor Wheeler, members of council. It is so nice to be with you this afternoon to talk about the arts. I've heard you say before that city council sessions should always begin with song. So to help us do that today, I'd like to turn it right over to Joaquin Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ted Wheeler and members of the Portland City Council. My name is Joaquin Lopez. I am an artist and mental health counselor. I serve as one of two creative laureates for the city of Portland alongside Leila Hale. Highlights of my work include speaking to students in schools and colleges, inspiring young people to harness the power of creativity. One of the biggest privileges in this role was presenting the storytelling event called Pentimento: Community Stories Memoir, Music, and Poetry, featuring the life of Latina leader and elder Linda Jaramillo on September 10th and 11th in partnership with Multnomah Arts Center, with musician Geraldo Calderon and youth actor Emma Fonseca. Linda shared her formative experiences from childhood and adulthood that led her to what she calls today her encore years. We learned about Linda's trials and tribulations and what she endured that helped forge and contribute to social justice and common good, transforming her community. We tell stories so that we may learn how we are all very different, working towards the same thing: being human, or vice versa. Through stories, maybe learn that we are all the same in very different ways, human beings. Today, as we learn and observe the work of arts and culture in our city, I share with you some words of inspiration and a song called "Universo", about the common search for ourselves to break free and feel the universe inside. A song from the event Pentimento. Enjoy. When an artist externalizes their inner life onto the canvas or dance floor, they express all their community's hopes, wishes, and possibilities. They become conduits of energetic expression for others to observe, reflect, and learn. Artists shape and transform culture through this process. This is why to transform a community, we must support, rely, and trust on the authentic expression of the artists who live in it. Quiero salir para investigar a las estrellas. En mi hogar guardo en mi caja mis juguetes. Aquel monieco es elefante hecho de trapos. The vitality of a community is directly related to the vitality of its creative expression. We, the people, have the power to develop new works of art, new ideas to share, and new products to fuel an economic and cultural exchange. And we have the power of imagination to stir the soul of a community. Quiero sentir al universo dentro de mí. Y ser la luz para producir la fotosíntesis. Voy a crecer un día, volar y resaltar. Pentimento denotes the emergence of the painters' changes that they made before finishing a work of art. Over time, these changes become transparent and bleed through, showing a painter's previous brushstrokes and creative choices. Because of this, similarly, there is something to be learned from those who have walked before us, for we are all creative works of art. Thank you.
Well, I'd hate to follow that, Jeff.
That concludes my report. You really said it all right there, so I'll just fill in some additional details. Joaquin, thank you. Thank you so much for being with us today. So the Creative Laureate Program is just one of the many things we do in the City Arts Program. And it's my honor to spend some time with you today to share a little bit more about this work that we do. As a quick reminder, the City Arts Program was established in 2018, just a few years ago, following a recommendation from the city auditor that the city's contract with the Regional Arts and Culture Council required more oversight. We'll be hearing from RAC a little later this afternoon, but I wanted to start with a reminder of our shared purpose. We are here to support Portland's vibrant and diverse arts and culture ecosystem and to expand opportunities for all Portlanders to participate in expressions of creativity. We are, of course, guided by the city's core values of anti-racism, equity, transparency, communication, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility. And we also are committed to the value of providing arts access for all, accountability to the taxpayers on how their funds are being spent, and the role of arts and culture as a catalyst for innovation across the arts sector and in our businesses and in our classrooms. To put it another way, at the City Arts Program, we believe that everyone in the city of Portland should have full access to a vibrant, creative life and that culture, creativity, and the arts are essential to a healthy and democratic society. The City Arts Program budget is shown here. We received $4.24 million last year and $4.41 million from the general fund as a special appropriation this year. That budget includes a significant contract with the Regional Arts and Culture Council, shown here in orange. RAC is our primary provider of arts-related services since 1995. RAC received $3.8 million of the City Arts Program budget last year and $3.9 million this year. RAC also receives other city funds besides the general fund, including percent-for-art funds directly from city bureaus and their capital construction projects and some of the proceeds from the city's Arts Education and Access Fund, or ARTS-TAX. So in a separate report, coming up right after me at 2:30 this afternoon, RAC will talk more about their total budget and the programs and services they provide as a contract with the city, including grants for artists and nonprofit organizations, public art, advocacy, and fundraising. I want you to know that we've been working with RAC on a new set of reporting requirements and new performance measures to help us better understand how these funds are reinvested in our community and to analyze the demographics of the people that they serve. I know that you're looking forward to their report at 2:30, just as I am. But for now, I'm going to focus on this blue sliver here, some of the things we do in the City Arts Program above and beyond our contract with RAC and how we are adding value to the city's arts and culture ecosystem. My report today is focused on the direct services provided by the City Arts Program, which include cultural planning, collaborating with council offices and other city bureaus, supporting the city's Creative Laureate Program, and managing $2 million in ARPA funds to support artists in underrepresented communities who were disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So first off, I'd like to tell you a little bit of what's happening with our cultural planning process, which is now underway. These are our planning goals for the cultural planning process. We will be assessing the state of arts and culture in the region. And I should note here that it's not just the city of Portland. The city is initiating this work, but because we are all partners in IGAs with Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington Counties and Metro to name the Regional Arts and Culture Council as our regional service provider, we are all collaborating on this effort now to reassess the state of arts and culture in our region. Another goal is to identify some opportunities. What are ways that we could achieve a stronger return on our arts and culture investments? And we will be addressing inequities, examining who has access to publicly funded creative experiences and who does not. And with all of this information in hand, we will develop a clear vision for arts and culture and develop some goals and strategies for your consideration over the next 10 years to achieve that vision. The total budget for this cultural planning process is $500,000, and the city is leading the way with $250,000 over a two-year period. We are collaborating with Clackamas and Multnomah Counties and Metro and have secured support from other government and nonprofit agencies as well, including the cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough, plus contributions from Travel Portland and the Tualton Hills Park and Recreation District. We've also raised money from the private sector to support this plan, including a generous grant of $100,000 from the James and Marion Miller Foundation. They're excited to be partnering with us in this investigation. This will be our third cultural plan in the last 30 years. Some of you know that our first plan was called Arts Plan 2000. That was adopted in 1992. And one of the primary recommendations of Arts Plan 2000 was for the city's Metropolitan Arts Commission to be spun off into an independent nonprofit arts council that would serve the entire region. And that entity is the Regional Arts and Culture Council, which was formed a few years after this plan was adopted. Many years later, in 2009, we published Act for Art. That work was led by former mayor Sam Adams, former Washington County, and former Metro Councilor Carlotta Collette. The key observation of this plan in 2009 was that arts and culture are significantly underfunded across the region. And the plan recommended a dedicated funding mechanism to support arts education and access. As you all know, the Arts Education and Access Fund was approved by Portland voters three years later, but it was only in the city of Portland. It was not the regional solution that we originally imagined. Our community has, of course, changed a lot since then, and it's time for a new cultural plan that represents who we are today and reimagines how arts and culture can help us rebuild a more creative, more equitable, and more prosperous future. Our current process, which has the working title "Our Creative Future", will be completed over the next year or so, and you can expect us to bring a final report along with recommendations to this body in early 2024. This work is being guided by consultants from the Cultural Planning Group, who have offices in San Diego, Atlanta, and Miami, and the Metropolitan Group based here in Portland, along with a steering committee of 24 community members who represent diverse backgrounds, races, ethnicities, cultural practices, and geographies. These people also represent multiple sectors of the creative community, which is broadly defined to include artists, creative workers, educators, business leaders, and social justice leaders. Their names and affiliations are published in your report and online at Portland.gov. This steering committee meets monthly to ensure that our engagement strategies, so all of those surveys and town halls and focus groups that we'll be conducting in the year ahead, reach all of the communities we're trying to reach. Together with this steering committee, we will co-create a vision and goals and strategies for your consideration next year. I'd like to personally thank all of you on city council who have taken the time to meet with me and our consultants over the past two months, and we look forward to starting our broad community engagement work next month. In addition to that heavy lift, cultural planning, we continue to collaborate with council offices and city bureaus to support some arts-related programming in the community. I know that Commissioner Rubio has spoken with many of you and had many wonderful conversations about the role of arts and culture. And Stephen Herrera and I convene your arts policy liaisons on a monthly basis to collect all of your ideas and get your feedback on arts policy proposals and programs. We've collaborated with you all in a number of ways, including community healing through art last year. This was our series of arts engagements, like Ten Tanny Dances, shown here, to help Portlanders process all of the emotional toll of the events of justice reckoning and multiple climate-related emergencies. I really appreciate how each of you have spoken about the importance of artists in our economic recovery and our emotional healing, and I just couldn't agree more. So thank you for that. We also collaborated with the mayor's office, the tribal relations director, and the Native Arts and Cultures Foundation, along with RAC, to acquire and install new artwork in the foyer of the mayor's office. These three new pieces by Don Bailey, Bobby Mercier, and Asa Wright look really great in that space, and I encourage folks to go check them out. We also sponsor a variety of community-based arts events in collaboration with your offices. Over the past two years, we've provided financial support for the Elgrito Portland Festival, Historic Park Rose Farmers Market and Makers Market, the Portland Chinese Festival, Tonga Day, the Portland Veterans Day Parade, the Royal Rosarians. And this photo here is from Race Talks: The History of Black Drag in Portland, which was a special forum sponsored by the City Arts Program and Commissioner Hardesty to highlight the intersection between BIPOC and QT+ community stories. Some of our collaborations with city bureaus have included monthly gatherings with staff in those bureaus. And, you know, many of these bureaus do have arts-related programs. PBOT, Parks, and Prosper Portland, and many others are partnering with artists and arts organizations in really important ways, and I've appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with them and to share information. I'd really like to thank Cassandra Schulte in BDS, who manages the Arts Empowerment Program, for facilitating those conversations. Last month, we collaborated again with the city's tribal relations program and IndiHana, an indigenous storytelling collective, to showcase indigenous portraits in public spaces across the city and throughout Native Arts and Culture, the Native Arts and Cultures Foundation building, the Multnomah County Courthouse, and RAC's offices in the Pearl. They will remain up for as long as they weather, literally, as long as they weather. We're also well on our way to restoring the Thompson Elk Fountain. This has been a productive collaboration with PBOT, the Water Bureau, Portland Parks Foundation, and RAC. And I'm really pleased to report that the restoration when we had a design advice hearing request last month. And I'd like to thank Randy Gragg at Portland Parks Foundation for all of his leadership in commissioning those designs. And of course, all of the fine city employees at BDS, BPS, PBOT, and the Water Bureau for supporting this project. We are now preparing for the Type III Historic Resource Review that should pave the path for restoration work to begin next year. As you know, we also have the Creative Laureate Program here at the city. In June of 2021, Commissioner Rubio named Leila Hale and Joaquin Lopez as our newest creative laureates. They serve as the city's official ambassadors to the broader creative community, and each creative laureate receives an annual honorarium of $5,000. This year, the City Arts Program is also providing additional funds to help support their community-based programs, including, for example, Pentimento, which is the program that Joaquin just told you about. It's really hard to believe that Joaquin and Leila have already been serving in this position for a year and a half, and it will soon be time to identify some new creative laureates. So we'll be starting that process soon and have new creative laureates to appoint by July. We, in the meantime, will look forward to bringing Joaquin and Leila back to city council one more time for you to hear from them about their experiences as creative laureates, and maybe they can share some of the wisdom that they have to share about serving in this role. And Joaquin, I want to thank you again for being here today. And lastly, in terms of the main projects we've been focused on this year, I want to touch on the $2 million of American Rescue Plan funds that are designed to support artists in underrepresented communities. Thanks to the advocacy of Commissioner Rubio and the support of this council, we've been managing four specific initiatives. One is to activate the IFCC. Another is to provide resiliency support for cultural organizations. We are acquiring and installing indigenous art in the Cooley Neighborhood and a program to support individual artists in underrepresented communities. to support individual artists in underrepresented communities. First on this, arts and culture in North Portland. We have awarded artists and residents grants to 10 individual artists and community-based organizations so far, and another round of applications will open in the summer. The City Arts Program has contracted with the Native American Youth and Family Center and collaborating with NIA and RAC to procure and install new public artworks celebrating indigenous culture in the Cooley neighborhood. Last month, we did a site visit of potential public art locations in that neighborhood, and we will be honing our call to indigenous artists in the year ahead with the goal of having these new artworks installed in 2024. Over the summer, we established a beneficiary agreement with RAC to provide grants ranging from $500 to $5,000 to support artists and other creative workers in underserved and underrepresented communities, including but not limited to artists who identify as Black, Indigenous, Latinx, Asian Pacific Islander, and people of color, LGBTQIA-plus artists, and artists with disabilities. In all, RAC awarded 196 grants supporting artists in almost every ZIP code. 196 grants supporting artists in almost every ZIP code, and I found it personally interesting to note that the highest concentration of artists we served through this program were in the Kenton Arbor Lodge neighborhood, Concordia Woodlawn, and Buckman Sunnyside area. The grant recipients who received this support represent a range of races and ethnicities. 28% of those artists identify as Black or African-American, 16% identified as Asian, 15% as Latinx or Hispanic, and 8% identified as American Indian or Alaska Native. And lastly, in collaboration with Commissioner Rubio's office, we awarded $500,000 across 29 community-based nonprofit organizations that do culturally-specific work in their communities. Here you can see a complete list of all of the funded organizations, from One World Chorus to YGB Portland. These organizations were selected for their cultural contributions to Portland's communities with track records of honoring ancestral language and lineage and dialects and culturally-rooted customs with artistic expression, and we do hope that our funding helps reinvigorate their cultural programming that was impacted by the pandemic. Together, these 29 organizations employ 672 full-time equivalent employees, 75% of whom identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color. And a shout out once again to Joaquin Lopez, who helped us design this program and award the funds. I should say that all of the demographics from these ARPA programs are being uploaded into the city's Rescue Plan Open Data Portal as they come in. This is a really great place for the public to see where all of the city's ARPA investments are going, and I really encourage folks to check it out. And now, just looking ahead for a moment, I want to touch on some of the things we'll be working on in the year ahead. I am super excited that Stephen Herrera, formerly policy advisor for Commissioner Rubio, is now part of the City Arts Program as our arts policy advisor and council liaison. Stephen and I look forward to continuing collaboration with you all in the year ahead. In addition, earlier this fall, council approved changes to city code related to the Arts Education and Access Fund, creating a new position in the City Arts Program to support and coordinate services across Portland's six school districts who benefit from the arts tax. We look forward to building direct relationships with our school districts and to support the work of our oversight committee in measuring the impact of the arts education efforts in our schools. And lastly, with regard to monuments and memorials, I'm sure many of you saw Commissioner Rubio's announcement yesterday. We have forged a relationship with Lewis and Clark College to develop an inclusive and thorough community engagement process that will help City Council make some decisions about the monuments that were toppled or removed in the summer of 2020 and how to think about monuments and memorials differently in the future. This work is being integrated and aligned with our cultural planning process, but on a shorter timeframe. The planning work is starting now. Public discussions will begin in the spring, and City Council will receive our recommendations about the toppled monuments this fall. We'll address longer-term questions about how we make public art decisions by the winter. So thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for all of your leadership on monuments, and that's really it for my report. I do want to thank all of you so much for recognizing the value of arts and culture in our communities. Your investments right now are so important, now more than ever, as we focus on the city's economic and emotional recovery. I'm especially grateful to you, Commissioner Rubio, and your team for your keen interest and understanding and strengthening the relationship between art stakeholders and the city. Commissioner Rubio's leadership has illuminated numerous opportunities for collaboration and innovation, and I just really appreciate it. So thank you all for your support, and I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Joaquin. Anybody have any questions at this point? Do we have public testimony?
One individual signed up.
Why don't we hear that first?
Aubrey Russell.
Oh, hi, Aubrey. Three minutes, please, name for the record. Thanks for being here.
Is there a timer somewhere, or you're just going to let me know?
There.
Okay. On that screen somewhere.
Is the timer up?
I just haven't started it yet.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thanks. Aubrey Russell, Mr. Hawthorne's report mentions monuments, which are historic resources. There are laws that protect historic resources. These laws apply to citizens as they apply to the city, as we saw with the Thompson Fountain. Like citizens, the city can remove historic resources after the city has followed certain rules. The rules require that the city first provide public notice and allow public comment before removing an historic resource. The city should make a decision about removing historic resources, not follow emotional impulse. Then, public notice and comment before removing a resource can benefit the city by providing public input. Now, more than two years after removing the statues of Lincoln and Roosevelt, it's clear that the city has removed those statues. They have been removed. To say that they have not been removed is a fiction. Mr. Hawthorne mentions a monuments process, which we are told might yield a protective result. Other cities have led a process, but with the monuments in place. Other cities have led a process, but without violating their own code in a way that rewards vandalism and denies the city's obligation to historic resources. It was difficult to stop Mr. Hawthorne and RAC from removing the Thompson Fountain's historic resource protections. RAC did not advocate for the Thompson Fountain's protected status. RAC's public art director, in front of the Historic Resources Commission, in talking about the Thompson Fountain, didn't think to mention the word landmark or protection or preservation, yet RAC and Mr. Hawthorne still helped guide city policy. Let me give you another example. This summer, in removing the Washington statues base, RAC instructed that there would be no money to fund a crane, a small crane. The crane contractor told RAC that this would entail breaking the three granite pieces of the base into eight small pieces. This was, of course, taken by RAC and by Mr. Hawthorne. I hope that you agree that breaking public art into small pieces is not okay. RAC saved $1,500. RAC and Mr. Hawthorne helped shape the city's approach to public art, so the city ignores preservation laws and creates the fiction that Lincoln and Roosevelt can be removed before public comment and notice. These monuments are Historic Resource Inventory Rank I, elevated to Significant Resource, quote-unquote, which has a special protected status. I hope that City Council will not forget that city code protects these resources. I hope that City Council will not choose an unknown process that is an alternative to following city code. The city should follow the law and then pursue its other objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Did you have a question? Thanks. Very good. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Colleagues, any further questions of Jeff? Jeff, could I just ask, when will we get the report again? You mentioned...
For cultural planning?
For the monuments. When will we get that?
This fall. There will be some recommendations about the toppled monuments, and then by the winter, additional recommendations about monuments more broadly.
Yeah, sure, Jeff. Could you expand that a little bit? I think there was an announcement that came out yesterday about the process for thinking about monuments. I'm sure a lot of people, including myself, were in meetings all day and all night. Yeah, can we learn more about what happens next?
If I may, I've invited Stephen up to the table because he's the lead on this project.
Hi, Stephen. If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Stephen Herrera, City Arts Policy Advisor and Council Liaison. So in Commissioner Rubio's press release yesterday, she mentioned a broad overview of the monuments planning and community engagement process. So Phase 1 will start in January, and we have partnered with Lewis and Clark College to help us design and other academic institutions to help us design and co-create the community engagement plan. So community engagement will happen from January through June, and by June, we will have recommendations to share with council and feedback from all of those. And so we will have a recommendation for a community engagement plan that we will share with council from June until, for four months, from June till August, September, sorry, I can't get my math right, I wasn't expecting to present today. We will have a four-month community engagement process that will be informed by the design that we co-created with Lewis and Clark and other academic professionals. And then by fall, we will be bringing those recommendations and findings to council. Is that helpful?
I have one question. Maybe this isn't the right forum for this, and we can put it off till later. So I'll put this in the form of a statement, not a question, and I appreciate that you haven't had a chance to prepare for this, but I'm very eager to see what the criteria are around this issue. I don't need to tell you that there are all kinds of overlays here, and I would very much like to know how you're going to come up with the trade-offs on this.
I will just respond to that. That, Mayor, absolutely, that is the crux of why we thought it was important to bring in experts who have actually grappled with the monument question before. If you remember, monuments have been an issue that's come up for a lot of universities across the country recently, and this is why we are really appreciative to work with the new president at Lewis and Clark and her colleagues to come together and actually dive deep on your questions. So to put a point on it, we don't have those answers. We don't believe that those should come from us. That's what this group is going to help us develop, and we'll be contacting each of us colleagues as they develop them.
Commissioner Ryan, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to get clear on the timeline. I think I got confused. So January through June is something, and then Phase 2 is June through...
September.
...the summer, basically, is community engagement.
Yes.
And then the fall, you'll tell us what's up. That's when the recommendations come back. What's happening from January to June again?
That's where we sit down, the Office of Commissioner Rubio, myself and Jeff Hawthorne, with Lewis and Clark and other partners, sit down, we meet twice monthly for six months to design the community engagement process.
Okay.
That will be implemented in...
So it's the pre, it's the planning?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
And I do want to add that there are two pieces that will be addressed through that community engagement planning process. One is we will be making, we will try to come up with recommendations through the community engagement process on how to restore or what do we do with the five toppled monuments and the city's, and decide on or make recommendations on the city's monuments policy in general moving forward.
Could I just ask one question, and then I'll leave it be? Because I have a feeling when this comes back to council, it's going to generate a lot of interest.
I'm sure it will.
And so I just want you to be prepared for that. But the monuments were taken down illegally. They were vandalized, and I realize the elk statue, the entire infrastructure was destroyed. So that's kind of a one-off. But Lincoln and Roosevelt, why not put them back until we make this decision, since it's going to be, what, almost a year until we have made a decision?
Unfortunately, Mayor, that's not my decision, and I can't answer that. But I think, to reiterate what Commissioner Rubio has already stated, we think the public should weigh in, and it should be, the decision to return those should be informed by our community engagement efforts.
Okay, well, I mean, again, I'll move on, but they weren't taken down through a community process. They were vandalized. And I realize your attempt here is to engage the community, and I'm supportive of that, but it just kind of rubs me wrong that they were vandalized and taken down, and I feel like we should put them up until we have that community conversation. If the community says they don't want them, fine, but I just feel like we should have put them back. That's just my personal perspective, and I'll move on. I'll look forward to the conversation. If people want to engage in this conversation, how do they do it? Where do they go? Is there a website where they can find how to participate?
That's what we're designing now, and we will communicate far and wide how people can be involved in the process and give us their perspectives.
Mayor, may I respond to your question?
And Commissioner Hardesty, I'm trying to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll get to you next.
So when I assumed this portfolio, that was part of the discussion with my colleagues. They were already toppled, and my charge, when I was assigned, we had a conversation that we were to design something to bring them back. So that was my understanding when I assumed the portfolio.
Very good. Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Hardesty?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for that clarification. Let me just remind council that we've learned a lot since the summer of 2020, and I think there's a recognition that we are actually honoring people that maybe back in the good old days, we perceived them as being good people. We don't think that way today for many reasons, and most of them are around racial inequality and racial discrimination. I am very supportive of RAC and Commissioner Rubio's desire to have a broader community conversation around, are we really honoring the right people? And just because we've had a monument in place for 100 or 200 years, is it appropriate for us to continue to honor people who today, based on our value system, don't deserve the honor that they have been, that they've enjoyed? And so I want to push back on this notion. It's because they were destroyed illegally that somehow we should just automatically put them back? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. All right.
Ms. Mayor, I have one last quick question for staff.
Commissioner Maps.
Jeff, can you, when do we expect the elk to be back?
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I was hoping that was an easy one.
No, unfortunately not. The good news is that the Water Bureau has agreed to take the lead on the project. The unknowns are how long procurement processes will take to complete the design, let alone construction. We might like to ask for your help moving that more quickly.
Yep.
You know, permits and all of those things. In a normal process, the work that has yet to be done would normally take about two years. We're in the process of speeding that up wherever we possibly can.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize that was our current timeline. I know the Water Bureau plays an important role here as of today. I'm the commissioner in charge of the Water Bureau, and I'm committed to doing everything within my power to speed up that timeline. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, staff.
Very good. I will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
I'll entertain a second. Second. So Commissioner Maps moves. I've seconded. Any further discussion on the report? Please call the roll.
Maps?
I'd like to thank Jeff for this presentation, and I want to thank Jeff for the good work being done by the City Arts Program. I'm especially impressed by the Arts Program's work on resurrecting the elk statue, which is a high priority for me, as it is for, I think, everyone on this council and the city of Portland. I think you've also done great work on distributing ARPA funds, and I'm very impressed by the work that you are doing on cultural planning processes. Now, of course, a big part of the Arts Program's portfolio is RAC, and I'm eager to hear about the good work being done at RAC over the past year, but I'll save... But I'll save that conversation till we get to that presentation. In the meantime, I am glad to vote aye.
Rubio?
I will also want to thank our presenters today. And Joaquin, thank you so much for being here today and for sharing your voice with us. We're so grateful for the work that you and Leila are doing as arts and cultural ambassadors for our city. We just really appreciate your voice and your expression. I also want to especially thank Jeff Hawthorne, not only for his reports, but for your ongoing support and partnership with our offices in this council. You've been extremely helpful to get us up to speed in my office on the arts landscape and to connect us with key stakeholders, and we're very appreciative. My hope is that the city will continue to commit to strategic investments that will continue to incubate ideas and frames for cultural expression and methods, particularly among underserved communities. And I look forward to working more closely with the City Arts Program, regional partners, and creative communities to ensure that our investments in arts and culture not only grow, but diversify and thrive. So I vote yes, aye to accept this report.
Ryan?
First of all, thank you, Joaquin. It was, it is wonderful to start a meeting with music. It makes a difference. We could have used you a few times in the last month. Maybe at intermission, yeah, that would have been good. And thank you, Jeff and Stephen, for the update. I think I'll make most of my remarks after we hear the totality with RAC. I just, I want to put out there that how important it is to weave together the fact that, as somebody that came from the arts myself, it's about creativity. It's about innovation. It's about joy. It's about love. And it's also about entrepreneurism. Artists are some of the toughest entrepreneurs we have in the city. And they don't get lifted enough for that. This is an economic driver that's very important for all of us to remember. And Commissioner Rubio, I want to acknowledge that we get these bureau assignments, and then we get these other ones that are below the bureaus. Well, this is like a bureau assignment. So I want to acknowledge how much work it takes when a commissioner has this portfolio. And so I wanted to lift that as well. Anyway, I look forward to the RAC presentation. And I'm glad we're taking an afternoon to focus on one of the most important economic drivers of our city, which is the arts. I vote aye to accept the report.
Hardisty?
So I want to thank our Arts Director for this report. I want to thank Commissioner Rubio for her steadfast support and vision around what's possible when we start talking about regional arts. I'm happy to hear that we're having conversations now with folks around who should be paying for a regional arts council and whether or not the city of Portland by itself is the appropriate people to be doing that. So I am very happy that this is moving forward. I think it's wonderful that we are bringing academic along to help us with developing and designing how we talk about public arts. And I want to remind my colleagues, many of us didn't have a chance to weigh in on what art became public art. And so I'm looking forward for a very deliberate, intentional conversation about how we make public art representative of the public and not some vision of what the good old days. And so happy to vote aye for this report and look forward to working with Commissioner Rubio as this process moves forward. Thank you.
Wheeler?
I want to start by thanking Commissioner Rubio. And I want to acknowledge something. When I did assign this bureau assignment, and it really is like a bureau assignment. I agree with Commissioner Hardisty on that point. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Ryan. A wise, a wise person who spoke before me. I didn't appreciate the amount of controversy that goes with it. Art is a reflection of our society. And right now, our society is divided. Politics is divisive. Anybody who just went through a Thanksgiving dinner knows that. And so art today is being reflective of the current circumstances in our society. And as such, we have to navigate divided waters, right? Very treacherous waters. I want you to know, I think you're doing an exceptional job, first and foremost. That being said, I also think this is going to generate a lot of heat when it comes back. And I'm just being honest. I think, I don't see how it doesn't. And so I hope that we do give ample opportunity for voices to be heard so that when it does come to this chamber, we have an easier time of navigating those troubled waters and having an opportunity to bring our community together and not dividing it. I guess that's my concern that I'm trying to articulate. I appreciate the work that you've all done, Jeff. I think you're doing an exemplary job. Thanks again for your leadership. Joaquin, I second everything everybody else said. It's just fun to have you here. It's meaningful. Your passion shines through, and I really appreciate you. Thank you for being here. I'm very happy to support this report. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Colleagues, we're going to take a little bit of a detour here, but it's an important detour. I want to formally recognize the Director of our City Budget Office, Jessica Kennard, who will be departing from her important role at the end of the month. I had the opportunity to meet with her and the other bureau directors earlier today, and I promised her I was going to embarrass the heck out of her. And I let that be a warning to all other bureau directors. Before they leave, they should know that they might be publicly embarrassed similarly. Director Kennard has served the city of Portland since 2015, first as a principal analyst, then for the last four years as the Director of the City Budget Office. My team and I have worked very closely with her. She has helped us navigate very complex and multiple budget processes, including the annual budget, the fall bumps, the spring bumps, and then, of course, the fiscal year budgets. She is not only a wealth of knowledge and a terrific fiscal leader. We have called on her time and time again, and her entire team, to do things beyond the call of duty. These have been very, very challenging times in which to lead the City Budget Office. We had difficult economic times. We had the economic impacts of COVID. We then had the ARPA dollars, and the budgets were changing all over the place as we get ready to retool and reform our government at the will of the voters. We've asked her and her team to do very difficult and complex things that we maybe don't appreciate on the surface level. But when we separated the fall bump into two pieces, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes juggling that our bureau staff had to do. And I will confess, I wasn't as aware of that as I should have been in terms of the workload that put on you personally, the stress that it probably put on your coworkers and their families. When people are working evenings and weekends and playing catch-up, that takes time away from other life priorities. And I want to acknowledge that. Jessica has been a team player. She has continuously worked to support our council offices, our many, many bureaus, and our city staff. And she's provided thorough, and in my opinion, always timely, information. And the process itself has always been collaborative and inclusive. When I've worked with her, she's always represented, I believe, the other offices and the other offices' perspectives fairly and evenly. We constantly rely on Director Kennard's expertise. She makes sure our budgets are not only legally compliant, which, from my perspective, is very important, but also resilient, equitable, and community-focused. She's worked to make complex budgets digestible by the public, adding an important level of transparency. The budget is volumes long, and she's been able to transparently communicate that to the public through various publications and online resources that I know people appreciate. And I just really want to tell you how much I appreciate your service to the city director. You've achieved a wide range of accomplishments during your tenure and contributions to the city, I believe, will be here for years to come, reflecting the good work and the hard work that you've done. I want to thank you up, thank you, thank you for your leadership and your expertise. And I do have a former, formal letter of recognition I'd like to read. But before I do so, I wanted to open it up for my colleagues to have any comments. And I'll start with Commissioner Hardisty. She's joining us here. Commissioner Hardisty?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Maps hands were up first.
I'm just, I'm just afraid I'll forget you on line, and then I'll be sad.
I'm happy to defer and go back, go through the back of the line.
Wonderful. Let me just say that, thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Thank you, Director Kennard. I will say that when I was elected in 20, when I took office in 2019, I came in with a budget person in my office. I didn't need the budget person in my office because Director Kennard and her staff are the most responsive budget officers I've ever had the pleasure of working with. They have deep knowledge of every issue area that the city prioritizes. And I have never once not made a request that was not timely responded to. Director Kennard, I wish you great success, and you will have it wherever you end up. And I want you to know how grateful I am to know that we had a budget office that truly did work for the entire council and really put in the time and the energy to get to know what our personal priorities were and actually to help us navigate what is a absolutely unnavigable budget process. I want to also remind the public that Director Kennard showed up in community when she did not have to. When I joined this council, I had made a commitment to the public that quarterly I would do community meetings. And most of the meetings were always around the city budget. I would tell you that not only did Director Kennard volunteer to show up after the workday, after a very long workday, but she was really excited to participate in these community budget meetings. Director Kennard, I just want you to know that the city of Portland finances are in great shape. And a lot of that is absolutely because of the incredible work and leadership that you have shown over my four years here at City Hall. I had anybody who comes in with no budget experience, you are there. You are there to help them figure out a budget that, you know, is unnavigable for most people. But not only do you do it with grace, you do it with expertise. You do it with kindness. And I will say you also do it with a smile. It has been absolutely an honor to work with you over the last four years. And I have no doubt that had we taken your advice, we'd be in a much better financial situation as a city. You always give great advice, and it is up to us whether or not we take it or not. So I want to thank you for your partnership over these last four years. Thank you for your gracefulness, and thank you for your heart. Your heart has always been in community, and I see you thrive when community members ask you questions that, because they're trying to get a better understanding. Thank you for your leadership. You are leaving us in a much stronger position than we were prior to you assuming the role of Director. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I, nothing but love and appreciation for the great work you have done and the leadership you've shown the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Commissioner Maps?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And colleagues, I'm glad we have this opportunity to thank Jessica Kennard for her service to our city. Director Kennard, I want to say this to you. I am in awe of the knowledge that you possess. And truth be told, today, I'm also in mourning because the city is losing your expertise. And I know we have some budget people in this room, and I suspect they feel the same. Just yesterday, as our colleague, Commissioner Hardisty, pointed out, this council received an audit on the city's budget, and that audit came back clean, which is an awesome achievement considering the size of this enterprise and the turbulent times that the city has gone through in recent years, which I think we can attribute our success to you and the, and the team that you have built. You know, I'm really proud of the fact that I can look around this room and look every Portlander in the eye and tell them that the state of our city is strong. And one of the reasons it is strong is because of the hard work and good work you have done on our behalf. On behalf of myself and the people I represent, I want to thank you for your service to our city. I hope you enjoy your time off. And once you are rested and recuperated, I also hope that you return to a life of public service. Our city and state and country need public servants like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Rubio?
Jessica, I just, you know, we had the chance to talk last week, and it was just so nice to have a chance to connect with you. We saw them, we're running all the time and trying to do our best to do the city's work. But I just want to tell you that arguably, you had the hardest job in the city. You had to, while we all love to consider ourselves really great, well-meaning people, it's, you know, you're dealing with five different elected officials, their budgets, their bureaus, the bureau directors, during really challenging, challenging times for the city. So I, I just appreciate so much your grace, even under really challenging situations. I want you to know that you carried a lot, and I see that. And there's no one more deserving of following your dream than you. And I just appreciate your leadership so much. Your team was excellent. The way you did your work with us was extremely professional. You never talked down to me, even though I felt dumb a lot of the times in my early days. But you were just very helpful and kind. And you're just an excellent professional and public servant. And I agree with my colleague. I, I hope that one day, you know, our community can benefit from your talent again. And so wish you the very best and a really joyful new experience in, in your transition.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, my turn. Hi, Jessica, Director Kennard. I noticed your family's there. Could you introduce them to us, please?
Sure. So my husband, James, is here, and my daughters, Grace and Naomi. And my in-laws are also joining in the back as well.
Welcome. What are your daughters' names again?
Grace is wearing the blue, well, they're both wearing blue. Grace is the older one. Naomi's the younger one.
Hi. So I want to start off with them because I just have to thank you for the fact that you've allowed your wife, James, and your mother to work so many hours. I think it must have been the youngest. I think I've seen you on your mother's lap several times during my early meetings. It seemed like we'd always have these meetings on Friday late in the afternoon. I'm so sorry. And so your kids would be kind of anxious. And they're like, Mom, you're, you're working all the time. When's this ever going to end? And so I just, the gift of COVID was, the curse of COVID is that we got to know people's insides of their homes. And it became very personal at times. And I just was so impressed how you were managing that, literally, as a mother. And then you would not miss a beat and stay focused on the topic. And, you know, these are big digits. And you would like spell them out and then say what tranche they were from. And I say tranche because we received a lot of federal funding during this COVID challenge. And I can only imagine how much more complex your job became because of that and the way you had to go through so many that Commissioner Maps mentioned. So I'm in awe of your talent, your skill sets. You're crazy smart. You're very, very youthful and young. And you're going to have this really long career. I'm in complete denial that you're leaving. So unlike you, I wasn't really prepared for this, and now it's really hitting. And this is, you are leaving, right? And, but you could play this anytime you're looking for whatever your new advancement is. And this is your amazing letter of recommendation because no one ever wants you to leave. And we just really, we all, I just really appreciate you. And I really appreciate you dumbing down what you're going over. You'd have like eight staff members on there, all talking to me, so prepared, so eloquent, so clear. And then I'd have to say, timeout, like, please explain that again. And you never missed a beat. You never made me feel like an idiot for asking those types of questions. Anyway, you're going to be missed. And there are really big shoes to fill, and I wish you the best. Have a great holiday season with your, your mother and your wife. Enjoy the next few months. And I wish you well, and I look forward to connecting with you. And I really hope you stay in Portland. Our, our region really needs your, your leadership and your kindness and your wit. I'll miss you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. It's now my pleasure to read a letter of recognition for Director Kennard. Whereas public workers at all levels of government do extraordinary things to make our lives better. And whereas Director And whereas Director Jessica Cannard has served the city of Portland since June of 2015, first as a principal analyst and for the last four years as a director of the city budget office, serving in these roles with courage, grace, and innovation. And whereas Director Cannard has led the city budget office in its pursuit of providing timely, independent, thorough, and transparent analysis to the mayor and council. In the last three years, Director Cannard gave her time and expertise selflessly to support the city during periods of financial uncertainty brought on by a global pandemic. And whereas Director Cannard led the city budget office through the uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic and her calm but honest demeanor was apparent every day, even on remote calls when empathy may not transfer on camera. And whereas Director Cannard lives city values in her work, especially her dedication to not only providing a legally compliant annual budget, but one that's financially resilient and strives to serve the community in a more equitable manner. Director Cannard truly adheres to processes and intention for the community to be better off at each juncture of her involvement in the delivery of services. And whereas Director Cannard showed humor, resourcefulness, commitment, and helped make sure that identified problems were thoroughly addressed. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the city of Portland, do hereby proclaim an official thank you to Director Jessica Cannard for being an exemplary public servant and a compassionate leader, both in her bureau and amongst her colleagues. Thank you.
Really too much.
So I'm going to ask Director Cannard to take a few, say a few words after we take the photos.
Okay.
Come over here. And we, yeah, Commissioner Hurdisty probably.
There you go.
So we might have a little bit of like meta action happening. You know what, I will, Grace, can you hold this?
She said join us now.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, sure, please.
For, no.
Speech. Speech, speech.
I'll be right there, sweetie. Wow, well, that was, yeah, I don't really have words. I have to say that I was probably more anxious about this than I have been at any or any budget presentation that I've had in the last few years. Your words, all of your words are so generous. I am so incredibly humbled. I'm humbled to have had this opportunity at all. And I think that, yeah, I have to say first that I think that while I so much value and appreciate your kind words, I think some of it is misplaced because so much of what I've done, I've only been able to do because of my team. They have, I think my greatest accomplishment has been my ability to attract and hire and retain my staff. They are phenomenal and I'm especially appreciative of those who stuck with me through four years of craziness. But they do it because they're committed to public service and we all are. And it's really, really hard to be a public servant right now. And, but I, but we do it anyways. And I have a lot of love, as Commissioner Hurdisty mentioned, I have a lot of love for our community who is so engaged and so passionate about wanting to make the city better. And I know everybody's just trying their best to make the city better. And I have so much empathy and respect for all of you in getting up every day and continuing to work through these challenges. So I just want to thank you again for the opportunity, for your kind words. And this is not the last you'll see of me. So I will be back in some form and I do love public service. So I do intend to continue to serve the public in one way or another.
Commissioner Hurdisty, you had a comment? Nope. Thank you, Director Cannard. We'll move to item 1067.
Accept Regional Arts and Culture Council FY 2021-22 Annual Report.
Colleagues, this is our second arts and culture item, which I'm also jointly introducing with Commissioner Rubio, who's done the lion's share of the lift here. The city of Portland has contracted with RAC to act as the primary provider of arts and culture services for 27 years. This afternoon, we're joined by three representatives of the Regional Arts and Culture Council, or RAC. Interim Board Chair Elizabeth Stock, Co-Executive Director and Chief External Operations, Chief of External Operations Carol Tatch, and Co-Executive of Internal Operations Dela Ray, who will present the fiscal year 2021-22 Regional Arts and Culture Council Annual Report. But before we do that, I'd like to hand this over to Commissioner Rubio, the commissioner in charge, to provide some background on the report. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you. Colleagues, since taking office in 2021, it's been my honor to serve as Portland's Arts and Culture Commissioner. And since then, I've gained a deeper appreciation.
Commissioner Rubio, I apologize. Do we have a problem with the closed captioning?
It looks like the captions have been off for a few minutes. So if we could recess and work out that technical difficulty?
Sure. I'm sorry. Do you mind if we take a five-minute recess so we can make sure our closed captioning works? Thanks. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Do you have any opening comments?
I do. Thank you, Council President. So colleagues, since taking office in 2021, it's been my honor to serve as Portland's Art and Culture Commissioner. Since then, I have gained a deeper appreciation for arts and culture as a key driver and core part of Portland's identity, both in terms of our culture and our economy. And as a part of this work, my staff and I have taken an interest in understanding and strengthening the relationship between the Regional Arts and Culture Council and the city of Portland. There is no Portland without a vibrant arts and culture community. And the city contracts with RAC, as does the county and other jurisdictions, to ensure that vibrancy is supported. RAC's role is unlike any other arts organization in the region. So the city needs RAC and its programs to be accessible and function as well as possible for artistic professionals and Portlanders and for visitors. As a part of its contract with the city of Portland, RAC is required to present an annual report to Portland City Council describing how funds were spent, the communities that were served, and identifying the challenges and opportunities facing the local arts community. And today, RAC staff and board, together with grantees and partners, will report outcomes of their fiscal year and contract with the city. So let's see, my understanding is that my council colleagues have reviewed the materials beforehand and/or shared questions directly with RAC ahead of today's report. So I respectfully ask that my colleagues hold their questions until after the presentation to ensure that they have enough time to present and to ensure that we have time at the end for questions and conversations. I would also like to note that there are currently four vacant city appointments to the RAC board and we've reached out to your offices for potential nominees. And I want to thank those of you who have already communicated with us and I look forward to sharing the final list of city candidates with RAC before the end of the year. To kick off the presentation, I would like to introduce Interim Board Chair Elizabeth Stock and Co-Executive Director and Chief of External Operations Carol Tatch and Co-Executive Director and Chief of Internal Operations Dela Ray. I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Hello. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Good afternoon, commissioners and members of the community. My name is Elizabeth Stock and as Commissioner Rubio shared, I am interim chair of the RAC Board of Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to open up this presentation today. In addition to my role as board chair, I'm also a city of Portland-appointed board member. So I've had the opportunity to connect with members of Commissioner Rubio's office and Jeff Hawthorne over the last several months since my appointment. I'm incredibly optimistic about our continued partnership. It's one that is intentional, complex, and necessary to a thriving arts and culture community in Portland. I'm also thrilled that our organization has moved into our second year with a co-leadership model with Carol Tatch and Dela Ray as our co-executive directors. Thanks to them, we are modeling what shared leadership can look like and the depth of opportunity it provides to our organization and the arts community as a whole. As we heard earlier today and as we will continue to hear, RAC works alongside the city of Portland to ensure that the arts and culture here are strong, advocated for, and funded in the Portland metro area. And while our work is primarily local, we partner across Oregon and across the U.S. to ensure that we're relevant, responsive, and accessible to the creative community. And as we move towards our organization's 50th anniversary, I can't help but reflect on the countless lives, hearts, and minds our organization in partnership with community members and city leaders and creatives have touched. We'll be celebrating our anniversary throughout next year and so I hope you'll be on the lookout for opportunities to engage in this meaningful milestone.
In addition to my role as board chair, I'm also a city of Portland-appointed board member, so I've had the opportunity to connect with members of Commissioner Rubio's office and Jeff Hawthorne over the last several months since my appointment. I'm incredibly optimistic about our continued partnership. It's one that is intentional, complex, and necessary to a thriving arts and culture community in Portland. I'm also thrilled that our organization has moved into our second year with a co-leadership model with Carol Tatch and Della Rae as our co-executive directors. Thanks to them, we are modeling what shared leadership can look like and the depth of opportunity it provides to our organization and the arts community as a whole. As we heard earlier today, and as we will continue to hear, RAC works alongside the City of Portland to ensure that the arts and culture here are strong, advocated for, and funded in the Portland metro area. And while our work is primarily local, we partner across Oregon and across the US to ensure that we're relevant, responsive, and accessible to the creative community. And as we move towards our organization's 50th anniversary, I can't help but reflect on the countless lives, hearts, and minds our organization, in partnership with community members and city leaders and creatives, have touched. We'll be celebrating our anniversary throughout next year, and so I hope you'll be on the lookout for opportunities to engage in this meaningful milestone. Just last week, I, along with a few other board members, had the opportunity to meet with Jeff Hawthorne in the Portland building to discuss our continued work together. Taking in the installed art in the lobby and across the hallways and the art installations that are in progress filled me to the brim with pride to be part of this organization and to live in a city that truly invests in arts and culture using a lens that's inclusive, innovative, and dynamic. So you'll hear from RAC leadership and constituents today about RAC's recent activities and ongoing initiatives. There is certainly more to be shared than we can fit into this brief presentation today, so I welcome anyone to follow up with our team and our leadership if you're interested in digging deeper into anything we're covering today. So thank you again for joining us today, and I'm pleased to pass the virtual mic over to RAC co-executive director Della Rae.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Hello, City Council. It is good to be with you this afternoon. My name is Della Rae, co-director of the Regional Arts and Culture Council, leading the charge of internal operations. It is my pleasure to introduce you to the RAC team. Your eyes show you pictures that represent 35% diversity. What cannot be seen visually can only be felt and experienced is our innovative culture that centers who we are as an organization, our values, shared agreements, and decision-making to ultimately inform how we operate. Who we are on the outside is a reflection of who we are on the inside. We are a capable, experienced, and invested team. Next slide. Now please meet our Board of Directors, that is inclusive of 45% diversity.
I'm gonna jump in here right now. I apologize, sir. We seem to be having some technical difficulties in chambers. We are not seeing a PowerPoint presentation, but I believe it's coming up right now. There you go. I apologize for the interruption, and you may resume.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mas.
Please go to slide three.
So go to the second slide. That's our team.
And then one more.
And now the next slide, please, to our board. Which is a Board of Directors that is inclusive of 45% diversity. This evolving group of leaders brings guidance and clears the pathway for RAC to continue exceeding expectations in support of our regional arts community. Thank you for being together this afternoon, and now I hand it over to Carol Tatch, co-executive director of external operations.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carol Tatch, and I'm the director of, I'm the co-executive director for the Regional Arts and Culture Council, and I'm the chief for external operations for the organization. I am an African-American female. I have very tiny dreadlocks, and I'm sitting here at the table in a mustard-colored sweater. Thank you very much for being here with us today. I want to thank RAC team members and guests who have joined us in council and on video. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for your verbal recognition of the importance of art and culture as economic drivers for the region. This is especially true for our artists and creatives who are sharing their joy with and in community. I am joined in council today by Mario Mesquita, who is RAC's advocacy and engagement manager. Out of respect for our guests, we are asking that those who are live go first, so we will be going out of order. And in addition, our interim chair has had to leave because she needs to be with her children. And I want to extend my apologies to our guests, both in council and online, for the delay. I would like to start our presentation off, though, with our White Lotus video, if you could please load that. And then we will start with our first speaker, who is in council with us today, who is Talila Marfil.
Please go to the next slide, as you play the video.
Thank you very much. That was a celebration video, a thank you video, sent to RAC from the White Lotus Dragon and Lion Dancers after they received a grant to their foundation. I would love to invite Talila Marfil up to our seat so that he can give his presentation in council. Talila is also known as Kain Kato Tohan. If I have mispronounced that, please let me know. He is a West Philippine Filipino-American hip-hop artist residing in Portland. He is known for illustrating social issues, cultural island heritage, and grit through its dynamic rhythm schemes, sorry, through dynamic rhyme schemes and choppy lyrics.
Thank you for that introduction. Hello, y'all. Talila Marfil, my story is a story of lack of resources and a lost identity. During the Filipino-American War, 2 million Filipinos were murdered above the age of 10 years old, and they didn't tell that in the history books. And prior to that, we were colonized for 300 years by the Spaniards. So our culture was really hard to remember, especially growing up as an immigrant in this country. In 2005, I became a homeless youth in Portland. I remember being downtown with a sign next to my partner saying that she's pregnant. Can you give me some change? And someone was walking past me. I heard change in his pocket. We made eye contact, and he continued to walk. And at that moment, I snapped, and I went downtown, and I started hitting my chest and rapping, and people started giving me money then. And I started developing my talent as a musician by rapping on the streets, also going to the Apple Music store at Pioneer Square and playing on GarageBand for like hours. They knew I was homeless, but they let me slide, you know what I mean, and use the equipment. And unfortunately, my time on the streets eventually led me to prison. I went to prison for two years for a robbery charge, and music also followed me there. And when I got out, I couldn't be the fire, the city firefighter that I wanted to be because of my felonies. I couldn't do a lot of things that I wanted to do because of my felonies. So I went to PCC for music, and I actually became a mentor. Outside In ended up hiring me. That's the organization I grew up in. And also Outside the Frame put a camera in my hands and told me to tell my story. And now I am alumni of Outside the Frame. I stand here before you today, being instrumental in developing five programs and currently running a program on 122nd called Ascending Flow, working with foster youth aging out of the DHS system. We have a basement full of music, art, all that stuff, and a whole bunch of mentors that use music as a tool to help them heal and help them gain the life skills to become independent from that system. I also run a national pilot program, turning peer support into a career pathway for youth to get in the field. And we hired one of our youth that graduated from Ascending Flow, and he is currently in that apprenticeship program today. Music has followed me throughout my journey, and without RAC giving me the opportunity to amplify my voice, I've been rapping for a long time, on the streets, in basements, all that stuff. And once they gave me the opportunity to take this grant money and multiply it, it really, I became a voice for my people. I went viral on TikTok. I got on the news. News articles have been written about me. I'm getting booked around the country. And my Filipino community, Islander community, and Asian community is gathering around me because of the message that I rap about, and that's to amplify our culture, to remember our history, to remember what happened to us, and to inspire the next generation to do the same. Big shout out to Regional Arts Community and Community, or, how do you say?
Regional Arts and Culture?
Cultural Council. I always mess that up. I just say RAC for short. Big shout out to Molly, Helen, Salvador, Mario, all the homies at RAC for, so not just supporting me, but supporting a lot of people in the community. And also to Joaquin in the back. He gave me my first hip-hop teaching job at Latino Networks. And I wouldn't be where I'm at today without mentors in the city taking me under their wing and cultivating me. And Rubio, I remember you when I spoke at New Avenues in 2014 and shared my story of losing my son during my homeless days. And it's good to see you up here still doing your thing. You know what I'm saying? So, much love. We ended up starting a Filipino community center in Portland called the Banyan Nihan Center. And I'm throwing a screening of Lumbia with a Vengeance. It's so good to see movies being showed in our city. But this is a Filipino movie, and I want to invite all y'all to pull up. January 28th, you get to play the Lumbia with your ticket. And we're gonna show Big Flip, the music video that went viral with the support of RAC on the big screen, and celebrate it together as a community, and celebrate our Filipinos in this community that have been out here adding to this community, not just in Portland, but all across the country, specifically also in war too. And it's time for our people to get what to do to them, and thank you for hearing me out today. Much love. Kapwa. So good na. That means charge.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We will next hear from Mary Dawn Brooker, yes, thank you, who is on soon.
Hi. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. Really, I just wanted to present something of a love letter to Regional Arts and Culture Council. Because they have profoundly affected not only my art, but also works, festivals, exhibits, and public offerings at Blackfish Gallery, where I'm a member-owner. Blackfish Gallery is one of the oldest and most iconic art galleries in Portland and the longest-running artist collective west of the Mississippi. As you know, in the arts community, there are all different kinds of funders in Portland, and I've been the recipient of some. I've been a participant in others. I've been readers for some. But I really think that none of them have the breadth and the weight and the impact of RAC. And that's one reason, is because concepts like equity and community and artist support are tossed around and pursued, either in good faith or because they're the flavor of the day by founders. But equity, community, and vision are built into the very structure of RAC and have been as long as we've been on the receiving end of all kinds of their hard work. They are absolutely unique in their commitment to both traditional and innovative projects. At the same time, their process strives to uphold the highest standards of excellence and fairness, and I don't even know how they do that. I've gotten grants from RAC, and I failed to get other grants from RAC, and every time, I was treated with such respect and professionalism and kindness and education. They funded my land art exhibit, the first land art exhibit ever in Oregon, and allowed me to provide a platform for Native American presence so that we could learn from those communities, and that brought a five-year plan into fruition. They funded an arts and performance festival at Blackfish called Be About Love. That was inspired by a desire to show that the arts can bring people together, even in very, very divisive times, which are the times we live in. But really, mostly what I came here to say is that RAC is way more than individuals and individual projects. Because arts in Oregon and truthfully arts everywhere are very interdependent on each other. It's not only about what I create, but also about what I see, what my eyes are open to, what new ideas I'm exposed to, what brings me into contact with creativity, resilience, and excitement about the world. And so many times, I'll go and see unbelievable performances. I'll hear words. I'll go to films. I'll meet people. And on the program, who's the logo? The logo is from RAC. There is this notion going about that trees and forests communicate with each other through a system of roots. And I don't know if it's backed by science or anything like that, but I think it's almost the perfect metaphor for what RAC means to the arts community, because they are the foundation of so much. We at the gallery and myself personally, I'm so grateful for all the ways they foster, support, and encourage a whole diverse ecosystem of art that makes Oregon arts vibrant and necessary and groundbreaking, and we need them. Please support them and celebrate them, and that's my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mary Dawn. I would like to read a description for her. Mary Dawn is a writer from Oregon, author of Interstate and Idiom. Her poetry and fiction have been widely published and anthologized. Her plays have been performed nationwide. Again, thank you. Next, we will hear from Michael Bernard Stevenson, who is an artist and a recipient from RAC's Public Art Program. Michael, if you would join us, please. Michael is a master artist, Black, Italian, queer, non-binary, neurodivergent, and practices primarily in America. Their collaborative approach results in artwork by and for the people. Stevenson's practice has been dedicated to supporting young people ages 4 to 18 in developing the necessary skills to encourage advanced imaginative thinking and self-confident expression. Welcome.
Great. Thank you. It's always nice to have someone read your bio, because you're like, you don't know me. But now, you do, sort of. Yeah, my formal title, Master Artist, Michael Bernard Stevenson Jr. I got my masters at Portland State University. Came here to get my degree. And one of the reasons I'm still sticking around, there are many, but as it relates to RAC, it's hard to be an artist. And that kind of came up in today's session earlier. And so it's nice to be and feel supported. I do a lot of work in the community. I do a lot of work with youth. Currently working on the Jefferson Modernization Project. And it's a lot of hard work to kind of advocate for the community when dovetailing with larger governmental systems. And so I think one of the main reasons I was invited is because I was supported with a project called Gallery Blue. This is an installation that exists in the parole and probation facility that's on 122nd. And the process of negotiating this project initially was quite challenging. And, you know, I'm building a story here where I was working particularly with Peggy Candelon, who's retired from RAC. But the nature of my work is hard to understand. And so I was trying to convince the group that the idea I had was important. And it took a while, and eventually Peggy was like, oh, I think I get this. Let's write the contract in this way. Essentially, what we pitched was to create a gallery for currently and formerly incarcerated artists. RAC was functioning as an intermediary for the institution of DCJ, and they were like, we got some money. We want some art in the wall. We want it to look good. And I was like, yes, and there's this other layer that's really important. You have to get it to want it. And it took a while for the concept to make sense. And when we were negotiating it, RAC was like, well, maybe we can make the frames. I was like, no, no, no. We have to make the frames. We used reclaimed wood from a house, from a church on MLK that was deconstructed. So this is like, you know, old, original timber, and it has a natural patina of years of use. And we pulled out all of the nails, because the wood was full of these nails. And we, with help from Keith Lackowitz, figured out how to make 17 of these new frames. That, you know, it took a while, again, to do that, but to understand why we were going through all this effort. And it wasn't until we brought the frames and we brought the work from currently and formerly incarcerated artists to the day of installation, and we put the work in the frame for the first time, that members of the RAC staff and everyone alike, our minds were blown. We were just like, I can't even believe it looks this good. And ironically, we, you know, I do a podcast about currently and formerly incarcerated life. And the producer of that show is in documentary filmmaking school, and he was making a documentary about non-unanimous jury decision, which those of you may or may not know is unique in Oregon, is something that was permitted until recently. The Supreme Court said, no, you can't do that. And we were shooting the Gallery Blue, and it was the first time that I've seen it, because the DCJ was closed to the public for a long time due to COVID. And now there's clients moving through the space. And so we covered every wall in there with something. And for the first time, I got a chance to see it, you know, with the metal detector there and the security guard sitting with his giant artwork behind him. But the clients are actually moving through the space. There's something to see. The staff are totally elated with something so rich and meaningful in the space. It's not just a pretty picture. It has meaning, and meaning particularly to the culture of the people who are there. And my collaborator, Blue, who's in the back also with us today, he did a large installation, and it was one of the largest artworks he'd ever produced. And so RAC really created the platform and an opportunity for him to do that. But it was also Blue's wanted to get vinyl stickers. But it was also Blues, um, wanted to get vinyl stickers to go in individual, all the individual interview rooms. So that when folks are being interviewed, there's something like there comforting them in this kind of challenging moment of their lives. And all of this was made possible because Rack believed that we could do this thing. And that, um, you know, it, 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 there was actually a moment during the installation where one of the staff persons was like, oh, like, do we want this? And Rack kind of sprang into action, was like, well, actually you are not an arbiter in which to decide what goes here. And so through this entire process, felt really supported by Rack, specifically Salvador and Keith who are working closely on the project, to understand the complicated nature of what this project was and to be the advocates in connection with the city to allow this to happen. And so, you know, I really, when I was invited to come speak on their behalf, I, I really wanted to make the time. Because I'm, uh, some, uh, my relationship to institutions is challenging because I'm always trying to shift the status quo. Um, and Rack has really done a really great job of supporting me in that. You know, the conversation about monuments and the importance of art. I want to stress the importance of human, the human component. And so for this opportunity for currently and formerly incarcerated artists, this is the, the only gallery for currently and formerly incarcerated artists to exist in the planet, right? So this is a shining gem that, uh, Rack is, is, um, an agent in, in bringing it to the city. So thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you very much. Thank you for making the time to be here today.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Um, we, uh, we could go to the slide that you stopped on, our mission? We'll start the presentation. Um, back, back, yes, thank you. Forward, um, thank you. We use, we love to take the time as we open up all of our presentations to bring to, um, bring forward our mission, vision and values. The, you know, we see Rack's mission, which is to enrich our communities through arts and culture, as being simple, but it is very broad. It sits in a duality of being both simple and very complex. This has allowed Rack to explore ways of using arts and culture as powerful tools for addressing a wide variety of community challenges, concerns and opportunities. Next slide, please. Our strategic framework and core values are how we exist in the world. We build an equitable, innovative and sustainable organization. We increase access. We advocate for arts and culture. We diversify and increase the resources that we have in the community to support community and to support the operations of the organization. And we drive innovation and partnerships. We do this through accessibility, advocacy, equity, diversity, community and innovation. Next slide, please. I will be talking about Rack's, um, work for the city through the lens of our strategic framework. Goal one, which is to build an equitable, innovative and sustainable organization. Examples for, of Rack's internal sustainability are around its access work. We have creative engagement with the community. We had incredible engagement with the community through COVID. Although we are still in COVID, we continue to meet the challenges. And we are seeking the, seeking and procuring the state and national funding to support our work. Rack's transition to a shared leadership model also leads into this, this opportunity for us to be equitable, innovative and sustainable. In that it allows Delarae and I to be able to speak with our colleagues at national levels and here in the local region in order to lift up the opportunity that sits in shared leadership. Next slide, please. Rack has increased access. Oops, I seem to be out of order. I did it again. Weird. Thank you. I appreciate that. My printer seems to be printing only every other page. So, from 2018, and it, for us to increase access, we have better engagement with social media and engaging online platforms and education. But from 2018 to FY22, Rack almost doubled the number of applicants for our core grant programming. Increasing access sits in this space. Our program offerings in both grants and public art are sought after. We offer engagements with the community in a myriad of ways that include being compensated, being a compensated community reviewer or being a volunteer such as our board members. We will shortly begin to offer spaces for interns and a resumption of our volunteer program and the possible resumption of our resource council, which is set, um, latent for a few years. We know from our 2022 survey that 29% of respondents did not engage with Rack during the last two years due to initial and ongoing impacts from COVID-19, or they had a lack of time or capacity and/or they were not familiar with Rack. We use our survey to ensure that we are connecting with community and that we are simplifying processes and removing barriers. Next slide, please. Our strategic framework, and I will not, we will not play the video for this one because it's, it's long and I want to make sure folks aren't stuck here, but I will include it in our reference document. It is part of our interview with Congresswoman Bonamichi that we had last fall. And, um, and she is responding to a question from Mario Mesquita and I'll just make sure that you have access to that. But our strategic plan, uh, goal three is to advocate for arts and culture. We will not play that clip. Our recent visit from, uh, the follow-up from seeing that clip, which was with, um, Congresswoman Bonamichi, was that we also had a recent visit from NEA Chair Jackson, Maria Jackson, who visited with Rack to talk more about the half million dollar grant that we brought in to increase municipal and county support for artists and creatives in Washington and Clackamas Counties. We did that work with Congresswoman Bonamichi and Chair Jackson and we met. It was actually wonderful because we had the opportunity to meet with local arts leaders. You will hear more about that in our FY23 report to council. Slide four, please. Strategic Plan Four, Framework Goal Four, is that we diversify and increase our resources. Rack has resourced funding for the arts from our local, state and national funders to support and fund artists, creatives and art-serving organizations, as well as cultural organizations in the Portland metro area. For example, our, at the Our Town Grant, which we'll speak about a little bit more when we reach our public art space, is, is a, is creating a cultural corridor in partnership with cultural community-based organizations that are Apano, the Division Midway Alliance and the Slavic Family Center Northwest. This partnership is also in collaboration with Portland Bureau of Transportation and Trimate. We look to ensure that we are able to find different ways to bring dollars and support into the community, Portland metro, as well as region-wide. Next slide, please. Strategic Framework Goal Five is that we are driving innovation and partnerships. And this is primarily for external. We continue to be innovative with our grants and public arts programs, including the HyperFlex to create and implement our Make, Learn, Build grant making that met artists and creatives where COVID landed them. And the start in FY22 of our mural intensive, which was, is a mentored cohort of artists invited to a new programs designed specifically for those who are underrepresented in this medium. For our arts education program and to provide support for arts educators, Rack renewed our partnership with Trauma Informed Oregon to provide workshops for teachers in six Portland Metro's public school districts. This was critical support for teachers as well as the impacts of the pandemic and race tension, racial tensions continue to impact student and teacher mental health. Next slide, please. This begins our highlights for the city of Portland. I'm going to flip to that slide so that I can see it better, which include... We are now ready to go to slide 15, which I do have. Our program, um, the city of Portland highlights include having 245 community instructional professional development touchpoints. The NEA Our Town Midway Division Corridor Project was initiated, which I just spoke about. Rack's culturally responsive murals intensive program was launched in fiscal year 22. And then we had both regional and national professional engagements, such as what we did with, um, the NEA recently and Congresswoman Bonamichi. Next slide, please. Our program finances. These are the, uh, figures from our FY22 audited financial statement. They show a comparison of our expenses and revenues. It includes work, uh, it highlights our programmatic, uh, disbursement of funding as well as our, uh, funding source, which the funding sources programmatically would be expenses and, uh, funding sources would be our revenue engagements. And then, uh, the breakdown of city funding is also presented here for your review. Next slide, please. Our program finances, which, uh, we breaking it down a little bit more at the behest of council members to identify city of Portland support as well as regional support that comes outside of the city of Portland and what that makeup is. And these figures are directly related to the ones on the prior slide. The city of Portland funds, uh, several of our programs, including the Portland Present for Art. At the general fund, we receive funding from the general fund. We have, uh, in FY22, we receive funding for the Arts Education and Access Income Type, Income, Income Tax Fund. And then all other funding, uh, that came in from the city was at a 45, 43% rate. Other regional support, um, our largest outside of Portland funder would be Montnomah County, then, uh, Washington County, Clackamas County and then Metro, who are all partners in our, um, intergovernmental agreements. Next slide, please. We have a pre-recorded, um, message from Laura Moulton, who is the founder of Street Books. I will read her bio as you pull that up. Are you able to launch that? Okay, I'll read it then. Okay.
Mark Lee. Hi, my name's Laura Moulton and I'm with Street Books. We're a bicycle-powered mobile library, serving people living outside and at the margins in our city. I applied for a three-month art project in 2011 to the Regional Arts and Culture Council and they funded it. Um, and at the end of that season, one of my regular patrons, a man named Keith, approached, returned books, checked out new ones and said, I'll see you in a week. And I realized, um, I had launched this art project called Street Books, thinking of it as a temporary thing. And then I realized that, that there was, uh, a need for it and that Keith would come back the next week and the next, and that many other patrons would as well. We are going on year 13 now and that initial funding from Rack is hugely instrumental in how Street Books, uh, came into being in the first place. But we've also gotten support for them, from them, uh, over the years. In 2014, we got a literary arts grant, which helped me co-write a book with, uh, then library patron, now integral part of the team, a man named Ben Hodgson, who was living outdoors in Old Town when I met him. That book, uh, has sold almost 2,000 copies. It's in the staff pick section at Powell's and we are very thrilled to have that in the world. It tells the story of Portland, of the patrons we met and who became beloved at the first season and the seasons after. And it also contains a how-to guide for other, uh, places across the United States that want to launch their own library. In 2018, we got a professional development grant, which helped in part to take a crew of us, uh, to Austin, Texas, to participate in the Texas Festival of the Book and to help launch our sister library there, Street Books ATX. Every library shift, uh, is a spot in the city that creates camaraderie, kinship, where people are welcomed and known by name. And Regional Arts and Culture Council, uh, is the reason that we have been successful. They have contributed to the infrastructure of Street Books, which was a creative art project, uh, that became an essential service in our city. We are so proud to be connected to Rack, um, going forward. We're a new partner organization participating in their general operating support. And that will mean that we can continue, uh, to do our work on the streets and to participate in repairing the torn fabric of our city. We, it is a rough time right now, but we are so hopeful and the Regional Arts and Culture Council is part of that hope that sustains us going forward. So thank you so much, uh, for supporting Rack and thank you for having it be part of our city. It's an essential component and we're so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Moulton is a writer and teacher in Portland. She teaches at Lewis and Clark College and for literary arts and is the founder of Street Books, a bicycle-powered mobile library serving people who live outside. She is the author and, and of the co-written memoir, Loners: The Making of a Street Library, which debuted at the Portland Book Festival in 2021. Next slide, please. Now we get to talk about our programs, which are community grant making and community reinvestment, public art, arts education and advocacy. Please advance the slides. We have a pre-recorded, um, message from Talon Jackson and I will read his bio once we are done.
Hi. Mark Lisa Commissioners, Genwatas, Kea Shneha Shushatko. I received a Make, Learn, Build grant from Rack this year. The impact of the grant has been tremendous. I had the confidence to start a short film series that focuses on unrepresented voices here in Oregon. I was able to connect with other natives here to develop the project. It has enriched my life and voice as a native filmmaker in Portland. I started the project as part of my grieving process and to honor the memory of my sister who passed on to Nochna earlier this year. With the help of Molly Gray from Rack, Kat Meow from Open Signal and Ben Waterston of Oregon Humanities, I was able to start and complete the first of the short film series. Subketcha to them. I have recovered and managed my substance use disorder and find meaning through the arts. Rack gives the opportunities for minorities and unrepresented voices to create and heal. A support for Rack is a support for those voices in Oregon. Mu subketcha. Thank you for your time and have a good day.
Kiyash Naj Shatko, thus-named red tailhawk, is an enrolled member of the Clamath Tribes, Modoc and Hoopa. Born on the Warm Springs Reservation in central Oregon. In his substance use recovery, he began filmmaking as a creative outlet and it deepened into a spiritual need. His filmmaking work now focuses on underrepresented voices. Next slide, please. And now the joy. Grants, our grants program in service to our community. General operating support, which comes out of the CITBG Fund and the Arts Education and Access Income Tax Fund, totaled a little more than 2.7 million and funded 64 nonprofit arts organizations. Our capacity building program spent, granted out 175,000 to seven nonprofit arts organizations serving underrepresented populations and whose leadership is a majority underrepresented individuals. Our Make, Learn, Build program, which we had two, uh, two iterations of Make, Learn Three, Make, Learn, Build Three and Make, Learn, Build Four, granted out $721,000 of CITPG and Arts Education and Access Income Tax Fund monies awarded to 243 grantees. This includes artists, creatives, organizations and businesses who are working, who are making work, gaining skills or building up a business, hence Make, Learn, Build. Our cultural leadership program supported 31 nonprofit arts organizations and art-based businesses. Our Do-It-Yourself Accounting supported 12 arts organizations and arts-based businesses. Next slide, please. We have a pre-recorded message from Tabitha Nicolai.
Hello, city council members. My name is Tabitha Nicolai. I'm a visual artist and educator originally from Salt Lake City, Utah, but who has been based out of Portland for approximately the last 12 years. I can say without a shadow of a doubt that I have Rack to thank for my career. Over the years, Rack has seen fit to award me approximately six grants, predominantly as project grants supporting the creation of new artworks. The art that I make takes a variety of interdisciplinary forms. Sculptural, it's installation, sometimes it's performance and digital, but it's always experimental and it usually involves video games and virtual environments as part of an overall piece. My art investigates challenging and at times very uncomfortable themes. Things like the rise of internet fascism, the way transgender people experience isolation and the damage that unchecked commercial development does to communities. It might not surprise you to know that this work isn't commercially viable particularly. It might not surprise you to know that this work isn't commercially viable particularly. A lot of good, deep, critical, and creative thinking just isn't, although I'm sure we can agree that profit cannot and should not be the only or even primary metric of success in life. It's along that line of thinking that I'm validated when I take note that art I created, with RAC's invaluable support, has been exhibited not only regionally, but in venues on three continents, and covered in publications such as Vice Magazine, Art in America, The New York Times, The Architectural Review, and academic sources such as The Journal of Video Games and Virtual Worlds, as well as a new book by MAT Press titled Wandering Games. Put simply, RAC helps bring powerful things into existence which have no other way of getting made. With each project RAC supported me through, I was able to build on the successes and difficulties of the one before it. I was able to grow skills professionally, technically, and interpersonally, brick by brick, to have the career that I have today. And last, I want to linger a moment on that piece about interpersonal growth, because the deeper function of art isn't simply the production of objects or the attainment of career. It's the capacity for creative works to connect people with each other, whether through collective creations as a way of staving off isolation, or by connecting people through space and time in the act of viewership. Art is about reaching out through the strange, abstract, poetic side door of the senses and connecting with one another, so that we can know ourselves and each other better, and in so doing, learn to love each other more. This is the work that RAC does as a hub of the regional creative ecology. It stewards a pilot light for us to find one another by. Thank you for being willing to share your time with RAC and I today, and thank you for your support of this vital cultural trust. Be well.
Thank you. Tabitha Nicolai is a transgender gutter elf and low-level cyber maze raised in Salt Lake City, Utah, and based in Portland.
Hello, city council members. My name is Tabitha Nicolai.
And based in Portland.
Hello, city council members.
I thought we were going to dubstep there. You're doing great, no worries. Based in Portland, Oregon, she creates the things that would have better sustained her younger self, simulation of a more livable future and the obstacles that intervene. And Tabitha will end our guest, because we brought the rest of our live guest forward. So I want to take a moment to thank, personally thank Mario Mesquita, who worked with these artists to bring them into the space, and with team members who supported Mario being able to find the right folks to bring into the space. Next slide, please. Public art is an investment in community. Portland's 2% for Art prioritizes working with artists historically underrepresented from historically, all right, I'm going to start that one again, y'all. Portland's 2% for Art prioritizes working with artists historically underrepresented, with historically underrepresented identities, and placing art within underserved communities. Next slide. And this is, the next slide is a list of our current public works in progress. This, of course, is part of the report that we submitted to the City Arts Program Manager, but I wanted to bring out and highlight some of the items that you have going on in this city. In Arrow Heights, which is at southeast 45th and Harrow, we have artists Teresa Wright and Mike Suri. At Mill Plain, at southeast 117 and Mill Court, we have artist Alex Schu. And at South Tabor Access Trail, at southeast 67 and Division, we have artist Adam Kubey. Our Black Portland Matters Art and Placemaking Initiative has multiple locations and artists. And our National Endowment for the Arts, Our Town Grant, which is funding the East Portland Cultural Corridor, is currently working with Apano, Division Midway Alliance, the Slavic Community Center Northwest, and as I said before, the Portland Bureau of Transportation and Trimate. We have 43 public works that have been purchased for the rotating collection in fiscal year '22, with 62% of our artists added to the city's collection that are new to the collection, and 68% of the artists who identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color. Next slide, please. At the request of Commissioner Hardisty at our last presentation, there was an ask to distinguish out the ethnic and racial demographic data for our, for the recipients of our grants and both our awards and grants, both our grants program and our public art, and that is what this slide represents. The thing to note is, and I will read an example of the slide so that you know how to interpret the data, that of the, I'll start with Native American or Alaskan Native, of the pool, 6% of the applicants were part of the, were, 6% of the applicants in the pool were of Native American or Alaska Native descent, and it made up 8% of those who were awarded. This leans into RAC's continuing commitment to ensure that there is, there is underrepresented group representation, growing underrepresented group representation in our programs as we send out awards into the community. Our community panelists also come from a diverse pool of our community, and you can see the results of that there as well, what that makeup is. The next slide, please, which is information on our ethnic and racial demographic data for our public art opportunities can be read the same way. The additional data that is on this slide also shows all of our public art opportunities, not just those within the city of Portland public, public art space. So again, there's an incredible diversity in this space. Our, the number of those who are from underrepresented groups who make up the pool of actual, of those who have been awarded continues to grow, and we look forward to continuing to make this difference in our community. Hopefully, this disaggregated data supports the need that Commissioner Hardisty brought to us, and if not, please let us know. Next slide, please. We have already heard from Michael. Great. Was there a question? No, okay. I will take this opportunity to turn the presentation over to my colleague Mario Mesquita, who will continue.
Hi there. Thank you for having me. First and foremost, I'd like to say that arts education is more than just learning about painting, reciting Shakespeare, but it's also about knowledge sharing. The arts actually are another way of expressing oneself, one's identity, and also one's history. With that said, RAC moves forward, continuing our meeting with congressmen and women. We will continue to advocate for legislative initiatives that support us all. RAC is quick to respond as well, and we will continue to do our work with all representatives. RAC is collaborative, supportive, and has worked with the AEF Oversight Committee and subcommittees through quarterly reports as well as meetings with arts educators and district leaders. A strategic outreach and engagement plan that started in FY '21 but has continued through FY '22 has started with the redesign of the AEF logo, and in FY '22, Phase Two included more social media outreach, interviews, an op-ed, and information sharing, including using the new logo on five out of six of the AEF district websites. Phase Three also extended to continue a campaign through two schools, which included more newsletters, which is our new newsletter, News For Your Heart, which was directed at our arts education leaders, which now many have received. As Carol has also mentioned, RAC also offered trauma-informed care workshops for all educators who received AEF funding. Next slide, please. We respond to the needs of our community, and as mentioned, we continue to meet with our leaders on a local and also national level. We will continue to disseminate information, support those initiatives that also support and grow all of our creative community, such as some that you might have already heard, Arts Education for All Act, and also the Creative Economy Recovery Act. Through our collaborations, we are able to guide through an arts and culture perspective, decision-making for folks in the state of Oregon. In FY '22, this has opened doors to new opportunities and relationships to show what arts and culture is in our region. Some of those we are able to showcase, such as pushing forward and also disseminating information, capacity building, leveraging federal funding to artists, support, and creatives, resulting in a visit from our chair, as mentioned earlier, NEA Chair, in October. And we continue to convene opportunities, advocacy toolkits, and learning opportunities through videos, online platforms, and also one-on-one consultations. Next slide, please. These are examples of some of our outreach opportunities that we continue to build, grow, and also initiate. Art Notes, which is now known as Arts in Focus, RAC's monthly newsletter, continues as a vehicle for community engagement, reaching over 10,000 people, featuring artists, narratives, resources, grant opportunities, and calls for public art and more. Now rebranded as Arts in Focus, we also have News For Your Heart, as mentioned earlier, that does reach all educators, which was distributed four times, reaching over 900 recipients. Art Look Oregon also has 265 arts partnerships uploaded, which is actually of growth of nearly 4,000% in two years, a district rise from the prior upkeep and management, and is now a tri-county platform, and extends its relevance and usefulness from the community as a tool to illuminate inequities and connect folks to arts and culture resources and educational opportunities. We continue, as mentioned earlier, we always want to maintain our foot and thumbprint within legislature, and also continue to request endorsements as such as well. We begin, we began and continue to sit on as a thought partner in the Regional Cultural Arts Plan, which you heard about a little bit earlier, and we continue to do so. Next slide. We will continue to move forward, future forward thinking, connecting opportunities for advocacy with artists and arts organizations through videos and short PSAs, highlighting the creative process. For every account, our numbers have increased, and we have created new allies and friends in social media sphere. Our Twitter followers have increased now to over $6,500, $6,600 followers. We have increased our impressions from 2,828 in January now to 6,910 in June. We continue to curate our artists' voices, stories, and highlights through Instagram, as well as making community announcements. Our followers now account for 8,184. We continue to use Facebook as the place for tried and true space for conversation, information sharing, and engagement with opportunities with our followers, which reaches now over 10,000. Next slide, please. RAC is also the lead in Multnomah County for the sixth edition of the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. This is the sixth national economic impact study of America's nonprofits, arts, and cultural industry. It documents the economic contributions of the arts across diverse communities and regions throughout the country. We are now currently partnering and coordinating, focusing here in Multnomah County, but of course, coordinating with our sister programs in Washington and also Clackamas County. Through the previous study, AEP V, the arts industry generated $687 million of economic activity, $364 million in spending by the arts and cultural organizations, and an additional $323 million in event-related expenditures by their audiences. This supported 220, 222,999 full-time equivalent jobs, and generated $53 million in revenue to local and state governments. Next slide.
Great. This is our opportunity to say thank you very much. I do want to lean into a question that I should have done when we were doing our program expenses, that was asked by Commissioner Ryan, who isn't here, but I want it to be on record. When we met with him, he wanted to have an understanding of how much of the funding from the city of Portland went out, went to artists who may not live within the city of Portland. And then I responded by saying, and let's also find out how much funding from outside of the Portland, outside of Portland comes in to support Portland artists. And I, my sincere thanks to Helen Dottso, our grants director, who provided me with some delicious numbers. I want to have it go on record to note that $20,077 went to eight RAC recipients that provided Portland mailing addresses but reside outside of the city of Portland's service limits, and that of those total awarded to these eight grantees, $45,000 of, $45,000 of leveraged funds from other sources were also used to support their work. These other sources included Multnomah County, the Oregon Arts Commission, Washington County, Clackamas County, and the NEA. Of the, of the $3,970,040 awarded to the city of Portland, we, awarded to city of Portland-based grantees, $301,850 was leveraged from other funding sources. So those would be, that would be funding that came in to support the city of Portland artists, so $301,850, and they came from funding sources, including Multnomah County and the NEA. Thank you very much. We are working together for change, and we look forward to your questions and comments with regards to our report to the city.
Thank you for that very thorough report, and I want to build upon an answer that you gave to Commissioner Ryan about the demographics of folks who have participated in grants, your grant programs. I think there's a slide that actually addresses that. Can we pull up that slide? It's a demographic slide. I think it's the second demographic slide that is in the presentation.
[inaudible]
Is it up? Oh, can we, can we make it bigger?
Do you, you want grant-making or public art?
I want, I think it's this slide. Let's take a.
Okay, this is the public art opportunities.
So, public art opportunities. When I saw this, I, this wasn't in the, I don't think this slide was in the slide that you presented to.
It was updated based on.
Yeah, which is great, and I like this. Can you explain to me what's going on in this?
Yes, yes. So as you read this slide, and it would be the same for the grant-making program, what Commissioner Hardisty wanted to know was, what are the actual individual demographics of those, of the people receiving the grants, specifically to see if RAC was meeting, or what it looked like for the Black, Indigenous, and people of color. So as you look at this slide, those who applied are pink. So even starting with the first one, which I can't read from there, but who have multiple identities, of the 24, of the 18%, is that 18, sorry, of the 18% that applied for grants, 24% actually, 24, they made up 24% of the pool. So they made up 18% of the applicant pool, but 24% of the award pool.
Okay. And what's the difference between only city of Portland public art opportunities versus all public art opportunities?
It's just funding for non-city of Portland public art that came, so other regions. So we work with Multnomah County.
So we're talking.
Exactly.
I'm really glad that you put this slide in here, although for next year, I would request that maybe you put it in a different format. If you take a look at the data in these two graphs, you'll notice that they are, it's essentially the same. There's only like 24, 18, 24, 19, 4, 3. I think it might be. I think it might be more helpful if you showed us a bar chart that showed, showed us funding by, for the different counties, because I think right now, so much of Portland represents your data, that these two, these two graphs are not meaningfully different from each other. It's really hard for me to tell what's going on, other than it appears that Portland is overwhelmingly wagging the dog here, like there's only a 1% difference in most of these categories. So I don't know how much new information it's telling me, other than largely Portland dominates this space. Am I getting that right, or am I misreading something here?
I don't think I'm clear on what the question is. So with regards to all public art opportunities, so that means ones that are funded by the city of Portland and other places. And actually, so, so city of Portland is within that. So what you would look at is perhaps, I'll just pick one, if, oh, it is so hard to see these, 24%, 24%. So of the overall pool of, in comparison, oh, oh, great. So what you're saying, and what I'm understanding, is there isn't a significant difference between just Portland and everybody, and perhaps it just doesn't make any difference for you if we show all public art, if just city of Portland is. if we show all public art, if just city of Portland is representative of what you're looking for.
Yeah, I don't necessarily understand what new information comes from the way you've presented the data here. I think there might be a way to reframe the all-public art opportunities. Maybe if you just did public art opportunities that are not in the city of Portland or something, that would tell me...
Yeah, so just completely disaggregated to...
That would tell me something more, but...
Absolutely. In fact, feel free to not look at all-public art opportunities, pay attention to Portland. It's a subtraction.
Great. Excellent. As long as, actually, I should ask here whether or not there's any...is that the end of your presentation?
It is, yes. We said thank you and a...
Great, thank you so much. I should, at this moment, I should probably ask the clerk if there's any public testimony.
Commissioner Hardisty, have a question?
Oh, I apologize, Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you very much, yes. Before we get to public testimony, I really had a question about the president's question. In my mind, the reason why we ask for the disaggregated data based on who's funding it is because I think, as you said so well, is that the city of Portland is actually funding a regional art program. And there are very little money coming from any jurisdiction outside of the city of Portland's ballot-approved ballot measure that provides that most of the funding that goes into RAC. And of course, we've got the 1% program as well. And so, I think that's the question. The question is, why is Portland paying for a regional arts program? And when are we going to have the other regional partners step up and actually provide additional resources so that it really is a regional arts and cultural program? And so, that's my question for you, co-director, Carol, is, I understand you're about to start a process, and you're engaging the other quote-unquote partners, but the other partners are not as invested as Portland voters are. What's going to be different next year as you go through this new process?
Okay. One of the things that will be different was elucidated in our mention of the NEA grant of half a million dollars, which is seeking to leverage support from our partner counties of Washington and Clackamas County, seeing if an infusion of additional funding for those counties, which is supported by the NEA, speaks to the municipalities as well as the counties. And what we're understanding from our engagements with, talking with the county commissioners for both counties, is that they are much like Multnomah County, looking at seriously reduced budgets. So, we are using that space to use our advocacy program to look at what funding looks like to come out from municipalities to support, which we've already seen. Again, that funding from NEA is showing them, if you aren't funding your, you are not funding your programs fully, we can bring in dollars that also support that, and this is what it looks like when your artists are fully activated. So, it's RAC kind of making the case with the commissioners, and we have in these conversations with both county commissioners who are aware, and we have the support of board members as well as community advocates who are working within those counties to kind of spur this on. And that was intentionally the reason for NEA Chair Maria Jackson's visit to Portland in October was to visit this program that RAC brought in, which they had not used before or seen in action before.
Commissioner Hardisty, you're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you for that response, Carol. I guess my next question is, as we know, the people who pay for arts in the city of Portland is not an equitable process. And as you are moving into these broader community conversations, I would hope that part of the conversation will be to make sure that we're not overburdening our low-income community members and paying a tax that people who are retired from the city of Portland do not pay. And it is very controversial, it always will be, but the inequity that was built into this art tax from the beginning is something that is going to continue to cause problems for folks who are living on the edges in our community. And so, I hope as you go through this broader process, that you come back to this city council with a proposal that actually makes this tax more equitable and more fair and more accessible for more people in the city of Portland. And I will end by saying, I do not want to fund arts in the region. I want to make sure that the money that the city of Portland invests is actually adding value for the city of Portland residents. And I don't have to say this, but I'll say it, just because somebody will take my comments out of context. I will say that, as you know, I am a strong supporter of both arts and music. That is the core reason why I am still a Portlander, why I did not pack up and move somewhere else when I first moved here over 30 years ago. But the reality is, this tax was put together without any consideration for how it's impacting the low-income people who are forced to pay this tax every year. Thank you.
Yes, and I would, if I may give you a comment...
Sure, of course.
The opportunity, especially with the AAF functioning moving out of RAC and into the city processes, is that you have within your own spaces, your own borders, the opportunity to really examine what it means to have something that doesn't have an equitable access point. RAC is, of course, here to be a partner to that, to work with community engagement. Obviously, we've had it since the inception of the tax, the ability to engage with the school systems at least, to ask about it via surveys, and then to connect with the community about the purpose of it, which of course is to support arts education. And we look for that hopefully volumous conversation that will come through from the process now that it resides with the city.
Do we have any public testimony?
One individual signed up, Aubrey Russell.
Come on up, Mr. Russell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rubio issued a press release yesterday, also yesterday, the Portland Historic Landmarks Commission sent a letter to Commissioner Rubio asking, among other things, that the city, quote, "follow its own zoning code," end quote. Fifteen months ago, Mr. Hawthorne, who is always very polite, told me that the city was, quote, "listening to the conversations that come out of prototypes and exhibit in the Pearl." I went to this exhibit, which featured art conceived adjacent to a theme of, quote, "the violence of the American experiment." Removal of existing monuments was a starting point. There was art depicting George Washington in flames, Abe Lincoln covered in paint, Washington with paint, et cetera. In my view, art that attacks people, dishonors people, demeans people, is not the best art, but prototypes has every right to embrace that art. What surprised me was not that RAC helped fund and guide this exhibit, but that they were doing this at the exact same time that they were engaged in an exercise on behalf of the city to determine the fate of public art. This struck me as a conflict, in addition to being a strange, private way to decide a very public issue. Now, months later, appears RAC may play a role in planning the future of public monuments. Last year, RAC lobbied to keep Lincoln and Roosevelt statues from being part of the South Park Blocks protections under the National Register of Historic Places. So, RAC has already worked to undermine historic resource protections. I had not heard RAC, as a manager of some of the best-recognized historic resources in the city, comment on the need to follow the city's law. I did not hear RAC address their need to follow the laws that protect the Thompson Fountain. As a private nonprofit, RAC hires who it likes. For example, this year, RAC hired Mac McFarland, the director of the art gallery that organized the prototypes exhibit that I just described. He also worked at the arts program at Lewis and Clark College. His collaborator on the prototypes exhibit, Jess Perlitz, still works at the Lewis and Clark College. We have learned from Commissioner Rubio's office yesterday that the college will help design and run a process for assessing monuments. This unknown process is offered as an alternative to the city following its own historic preservation laws. I hope that the city follows its code instead of being distracted by an unspecified process run by a private, outside entity that will not conform with city code. Finally, I would like to ask the city, please adopt a positive additive approach to public art as a way of diversifying art. The negative, subtractive approach to public art seems an unfortunate use of resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public testimony?
That concludes testimony.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, do you have any questions? Actually, I do have a couple of questions, so I'm going to ask, I'll give people a heads-up. I'm going to ask RAC staff to come up and answer a couple of questions, and then I'm going to ask Jeff to come up and answer a question. But why don't we start with RAC staff? Welcome back, and I want to thank you for this very thorough presentation, and I want to thank you for the work that you do on behalf of the city and the region. I also want to say I'm very impressed with your strategic framework. That looks like awfully great thinking. However, I do have concern about your ability to achieve two components of your strategic framework. That's strategy one, which is sustainability, and strategy four, which deals with diversifying resources. And so, what I'd like to ask the clerk to do now is to pull up the slide, which shows us the budget data from the presentation that we received today. Okay, so, finances, just, keep going, there's a different one. Expenses, revenues. This is the one I wanted to spend a little bit of time on. And here, one of my, I have several just questions that I think are pretty straightforward, and I was hoping you could kind of clarify them for us. One has to do with spending. I believe if we take a look at the slide, last year, RAC had $8.3 million in expenses and $7.4 million in revenues, which should translate into about $900,000 in deficit spending. Now, I know sometimes nonprofits and organizations engage in a little bit of deficit spending, but in the presentation I heard today, I didn't really get an understanding of where that came from and how that's sustainable.
Yes, we did not have a deficit last year.
You didn't have a deficit last year?
No, we actually had a very nice, positive end for our year.
Okay, so can you summarize? Is it possible to make the slide bigger?
Yeah.
At least, when I took a look at the slides that were shared with council, so what were your revenues last year? Let's start there. What were your total revenues?
I don't think I have that here with me in front of me.
It'd be nice that that were on the slide.
Yep, it would be. Let me see if I can pull up. I didn't bring the 990. I do not have the 990 with me in my packets. I will maybe want to have to put in a memo. I don't have the 990 with me, and I don't want to guesstimate, since it's on public record.
Okay.
However, we did not end the year in a deficit.
Oh, do you know if the amount of money that you brought, so you're saying that the amount of money that you raised last year was greater than the amount of money that you spent?
Yes, or with our reserves in place, which we do have from, you know, two years of COVID and having, and the organization itself, which changed its dynamic in 2020.
Sure.
So, our team changed, budget standard from FY21 to FY22 are still being impacted from that with resources that we got through CARES funding. And so, that funding itself sits in the space of being in our budget and is allocated for our revenue space.
Okay, thank you. I kind of follow, but it would be great if the data that was in the presentation or was received by council.
You do have our budget as part of our annual reporting to you, so please do look at, I believe it's, Jeff can correct, but I think it was our quarter four report. It has our entire budget as approved by our board.
Okay, thank you. I'll confess, and this will be the question that I want to pose to Jeff earlier.
Yes, yes.
I don't think the council, I don't think the council actually received that report as part of this ordinance. What we did receive is, I think, a rough draft of this presentation, and at least in the rough draft that I received, it shows that RAC raised about $7.4 million last year and spent about $8.3 million, which accounts for about $900,000 in deficit spending. I recognize there are ways that deficit spending can happen, and it may be fine, but it just wasn't explained in the data that I received, and I couldn't just make decisions based on what I received. Now, I also have a question about fundraising in the past year. And you changed the slides up between what was shared with council. Is there a slide in this presentation today that kind of captures your fundraising data for 2022?
I don't think so, but I can look at our...
Are you familiar with kind of how it went?
See if I have a prior iteration, because we did have that in the earlier one. I think what I have in my folder here is just to slim down what I need at the table information.
Okay.
Ask your friend. I know this is similar to the email that you sent with Katie.
Yeah, I think I gave you a heads-up on all the questions I'm going to ask. So, in the data that is shared in the ordinance before us today, you show us a graph that suggests that last year, RAC spent about $282,000 on fundraising, but only brought in $195,000, which would suggest that you guys actually lost about $86,000 in your efforts to fundraise. I was just wondering, can you put that into some context for us and tell us sort of what you learned?
I can reiterate how I responded to you via Katie, which is that because our, the way we budget across our program, so if we're fundraising for our grant-making program, so for instance, we know with NEA, that was a half million dollars, right? So, already, you're not looking, you're not seeing the number that you should. It's because it's budgeted in our grants program. Though it's fundraising dollars, it sits in the program where the dollars are being fundraised for. That is how our CFO puts this into our budget process, and it's part of our audited financial statements, so our auditor is aware that that alignment happens. So, if it's fundraising for a specific program, it goes into that program and is not necessarily reflected in our fundraising line, because that's an entire program for the organization.
So, what was your net on fundraising for last year?
Yes, yes. And so, that ball mark, I'll have to send you. I asked the CFO today in relationship to the question that you asked me.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can send you that, what the total is. And so, what's going to happen is it'll just be chunks out of the different programs that sit on the fundraising line into the final fundraising amount. And I can send you that.
Okay, I would appreciate that. For the public record, and just so you understand what I seem to understand based on the information that was presented to me, it looks to me like you guys lost about $86,000 in fundraising last year. And sometimes you have bad fundraising years, and it certainly was a big year. And there's no crime in trying to fundraise and not meeting your goals, but I'm not, but based on, based on the conversation, you're telling me that's not the case?
Yes.
That's fine, so I'd love to actually be able to know how much you raised, because right now, it looks like, it looks like, to me, based on the information I have, it looks like there's kind of a problem here, and I'm told there's actually, not only is there not a problem, but this is just a misunderstanding, and I still don't understand.
Well, it's just how the data is represented on our budget, how we allocate for it as we're doing our budgeting process, and how our board sees that data when they approve the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Another piece here that I'm kind of concerned about in terms of budget stuff has to do with budget projections. I think Commissioner Hardisty kind of talked about the need to diversify resources, and I was actually really happy, at least in the initial budget that you guys shared with us in the ordinance that's before us today, which suggested that last year, you guys had a budget of about $7.4 million, but you're anticipating next year, your budget's almost going to double to like $13.6 million. But it looks like the funding you're expecting from the city is essentially... But it looks like the funding you're expecting from the city is essentially flat, which is great news. But what I don't understand is where that $5.9 million in new money that you're expecting is going to come from.
Yes, so it would primarily be coming from grant-making sources. So again, we seek funding from external partners, as is part of the work of a nonprofit. And we, our budget in every case, for every organization, is for the programs that we're hoping to run during that year. If we run the programs, it moves into the budget. If we don't run the programs, it slides back out of the budget, or other activities that come up during the course of the year take their place. So as our, as our board approved our budget in June, it was for the anticipated programs that we would be doing in fiscal year '23.
Okay.
So having seen the sources of the revenues matched against the opportunities for the expenses going out.
Uh huh.
That, that's how that sits. So new programs being covered, not necessarily for the city of Portland, because our work is beyond just the city of Portland.
So that $5.9 million in new money that you're expecting next year, are there contracts for that, or you're going to go out and pursue grants and you hope to bring in 5.9?
Some could be already relied in contracts through our programs.
Yeah.
It depends on where the funding is being allocated from. So it looks like you need to see that budget, to see where the funding is being, is being expected to be expensed from, so that you can see where the revenues are in place for it to be, to be used for it. And we, again, that budget has been provided to the city, to, I guess at this point, just to Jeff.
Okay, and I guess there are two, well, let me put it this way. How confident are you that this new $5.9 million is going to come in next year?
100%. That was the presentation that we made to our board in June.
Okay.
We do know that some of that will be affected by the loss of the AAF program.
Yeah.
And so that has to roll up as part of our rebudgeting for the year, which happens as we turn the year, when we start looking at fiscal year end, and that has not been adjusted at this point.
Okay.
So that means a rollback in a program, then it means a rollback in a program.
So you're saying that you expect when you come back here next year, your budget will double in size compared to what it is this year?
At minus whatever we're not going to get with AAF, and if the programs that we assume we're going to be running in fiscal year '23 continue to run, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll confess, I'm not fully tracking, and I'm trying hard to track, but.
Yes, okay, so here is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We are aware that there would be, there are already going to be shortfalls in whatever programming was planned, i.e. around the Arts Education and Income Tax Fund.
Yeah.
So those have to be applied to our budget.
Okay.
That is not, that would not have been something that you would have now.
Okay.
Because our budget was approved in June.
Okay.
And we will not reassess our budget until we go into next fiscal, until we round the corner of the year.
Okay.
So what you will see is an adjusted budget, because we have to adjust it, because we know that funding will not be coming in. So what you have is what we had in June.
Yeah.
And what you need is where we are now, or where we will be as of January, February, when we start our next budgeting process, which also anticipates our fiscal year end, what that's going to look like. So it will not be the same, because we already know it has been affected.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I have one more question, then I'd like to get to Jeff Hawthorne. Do you have a sense of how much of RAC's budget for last year comes from the city of Portland?
That should be in the reports.
I think it's.
I think it's Jeff or me. I'm sorry. I heard you say Jeff Hawthorne. I'm sorry.
I'm just going to ask this one quick last question.
Oh, gosh. Ooh, I'm going to.
It's 86%.
Perfect. I was going to say 89.
So 80%, 86% of RAC's budget currently comes from the city of Portland. The good news is, at least according to the presentation that was shared in this, the good news is, in the data that you shared with us, at least online, you project that next year, your budget's going to double in size, and none of that's going to be city of Portland money, so that balance should.
Yes, there are no, there are no increases for the city of Portland.
Okay, I will also say, I still, after our conversation, don't understand where the new, where the 5.9 million is, but we will continue to have this discussion. Thank you very much. Colleagues, do you have any other addition, any questions for RAC staff right now?
We can certainly.
Oh, Commissioner Hardesty, are you on there? I'm sorry.
Yes, I am, thank you. And I did have a question. Thank you, Carol. I guess my question is, clearly, RAC's budget changed radically with the influx of one-time federal dollars that allowed RAC to actually expand some of the community's support that was distributed to artists who in fact had no access to resources during COVID and beyond. Some curious, if you can tell us, Carol, how that one, what's the difference between the one-time money and the ongoing plan that you have around the long-term viability of RAC? You know, it's hard to track the budget numbers, because what I know is, both nationally and locally, there was a lot of one-time money that was provided last year, but I'm really unclear about how do you get, and as Commissioner Maps said, how do you double your budget when in fact, we don't have a commitment at the regional level that they are going to share the responsibility for a regional arts and cultural organization?
Okay, I think I'll step, boy, I think I want to step on this side for a moment and first speak to the regional commitment for arts and culture. Again, with the.
Actually, Carol, if you'll speak to the one-time money and how that was a one-time activity first, and then talk about what the plan is regionally, that would help me tremendously.
Okay, and I'll say, for me, it's one-time, because I've been with RAC for two years. I have no idea what RAC has been doing in its pastime, so this may not be one-time. The opportunity that the CARES funding provided for RAC to both really sustain and help support the community leans into that opportunity with the NEA, which we are firming up our partnership with the NEA. We've already, of course, in this process, received an even, a larger grant for our work in order to be able to do that. And again, with this relationship with the new chair, we continue to lean in around the opportunities in the Pacific Northwest, and RAC being a major partner for that engagement. So the funding that's there, you're correct, is not local, and that's the piece I wanted to set aside, but we do have increasing support, not necessarily from the state, but certainly from the national level. Is Commissioner Hardesty still available? I think she went away.
Oh, yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, cool, all right. I'm sorry, you disappeared from the screen.
I didn't go anywhere.
Okay, cool.
And so I appreciate the fact that we have identified some money from the national level, and my understanding is that that's going to help you plan for what your strategic plan looks like as you engage with both cities and counties in the region. Is that accurate?
It is, but that's just a wee bit short-sighted, in that the purpose of bringing in the national funding is to activate the local spaces. So as we show in Washington County, throughout Washington County, and I'm going to bring that even further down to say the municipalities, the importance that arts and culture have in their spaces, again, we have the AEP 6 survey, which is the Arts and Economic Prosperity 6 survey, and as part of that data is we're letting the, our partner county commissioners know the impact is arts and culture. It's already changing the conversation, correct? So we are already looking in, especially, for example, within Washington County, for what it looks like where the dollars aren't necessarily coming out of the county's general fund, they're coming out of an equity fund. RAC will thrive in that space, because RAC's programs already lean into the work that they're already doing. So building those relationships that are a little bit beyond what we've been doing over time, because over time has not seen that change, that's the innovation. That's the opportunity that we haven't taken advantage of that we are now. We're having these conversations nationally to bring in the dollars locally, to activate the community, to respond to the need that's here. Again, as you said, city of Portland funding is fairly flat. City of Portland artists are growing, so how does that continue to support the community? RAC sees its place as coming in to help fill that gap. I mentioned, we brought in $301,000 to support Portland artists. That is a bonus for the city of Portland. We want to be able to do that in all of our regions, and perhaps, you know, in some of those spaces where they haven't activated the community for arts and culture funding, RAC can say, this is how you do it, bring in the national partnerships that are making a difference in the Pacific Northwest, where they are literally surprised to see the activation happening and continuing our work. If we don't advocate for it, we will not get it, and we are advocating for it louder and louder.
Colleagues, we have had these fine folks with us for quite some time.
A long time.
And the hour is getting late. I'd like, and if people have further questions, that's fine, but I'd like to move acceptance of the report.
Mr. Mayor, normally, I'd work with you on this one, but I got one more question I got to.
Absolutely.
Cool, and I would like to have a final statement.
Oh, very good, please.
I have a question for Jeff. A quick question, I think it's pretty straightforward. Also, it's kind of existential. My question is, we're here today to accept the RAC report, but I'm actually not really clear what the RAC report is. In the ordinance which was shared with council, there's a link to something which I thought would be the RAC report, but it seems to be a rough draft of the presentation we saw today. So what is, is the rough draft that was shared with council the report, or where does the report exist? I'm kind of confused.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Maps. RAC submits several reports to the city arts program on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
Those reports are usually hundreds of pages long.
Yep.
Including lots of data that I use to analyze RAC's performance.
Sure.
And I just kicked my chair, and it's saying.
It's that kind of day.
So to Carol's earlier point, I don't typically forward those reports to council offices.
Okay.
Rather, what we have done in the past is asked RAC to summarize all of their reports in a single concise annual report to city council, which is this report. We invite RAC to meet with me, to meet with Commissioner Rubio, to prepare the report for council, so that it can, so that we can help make sure it answers your questions.
Yep.
But we didn't have that opportunity this year, and so we need to work better together to prepare a report that is once again, a summary of all of the data that they've provided for us over the year, and prepare a report that really addresses what you're looking to see in this report.
Okay, so was the RAC report shared with council?
The RAC report submitted this year was, were the slides that were RAC's presentation. There was, I asked if they wanted to have a written report, and they did not provide one, but they have provided a report to me several, on November 15th, that includes some of the information I think they're wanting to share with you.
Okay, so the RAC, so the RAC report, just for the official record, is the slideshow that is linked to in the ordinance that is, all right, I see one head shaking, no. The RAC report is the, is the slideshow that was linked to in the ordinance, the documentation?
That is the report that we filed in relationship to this council action on accepting the report. And I will say, over the last several years, RAC has sometimes provided only a slideshow, sometimes a memo and a slideshow, like I did today.
Okay.
And sometimes a pretty long written report and a slideshow. This year, we only received the slideshow for this presentation. But again, RAC did submit a report on November 15th that was not filed with this report today.
And this presentation is based on that report.
Sure.
Yes. And the long part is the data part, but the short, the performance metrics review, it's only 10 pages, so that can easily be, that's easily distributed amongst the commissioners. And we shouldn't have been prohibitive, but that is where our data comes from. We come to you to give you highlights that show us meeting the performance measures.
Okay.
So we will clear the confusion.
Yeah, there, thank you. I don't know if it's clear, at least in my head.
Make sure you get the reports.
But it's been, it's been a long day. And the presentation that we received today is actually kind of different in some substantial ways compared to, compared to what was shared with council. And here, I'm going to ask one more question, and then I'm going to shut up for the day, I think. I want to ask either the clerk or the city attorney, what is the, do you have a professional opinion about what the report is and if it's been shared with council?
Thank you, Commissioner Maps, Robert Taylor, the city attorney. Based on the testimony, the report before council's consideration today is the slideshow that accompanied this item. And so that would be the report before council, that council would be voting on.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Rubio.
So Jeff, is there a way that we can make it clear about, now that we have, we've had some non-clarity about this, can we require from our contractors our written executive summary reports that's more concise and, you know, summarizes in addition to any presentation?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. We're working on a contract amendment now that addresses some other issues, and the contract language around this report is fairly vague. It says RAC will present an annual summary to the city council, and we could work together to prescribe in better detail what that report should include and what format it should be in.
I think that would be helpful. Is that, does that help? Would that help?
I think that's a great path forward.
Okay. We'd like to do that.
Thank you.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor, before I call for the vote. I should have mentioned earlier that Commissioner Ryan had to leave due to a personal emergency, and of course, Commissioner Hardesty was, is attending virtually. Commissioner Rubio, is your hand still up to, because you want to say something? Okay. Can I get a, is there a motion to accept the report?
My motion's on the table.
Okay. Can we please call the roll?
No.
Or did I skip something?
Nope, we're good.
Maps.
Was there a second? Because I didn't hear it.
I'll second it.
Well, Mayor Wheeler, you motioned, and so we'll take Commissioner Hardesty as the second. Thank you.
Got it.
All right, so folks here, I'm voting, I want to thank everyone for the presentation today. I want to thank RAC for the work they do in the community. I have to say, I'm kind of frustrated with the report, and I kind of, I think the questions I asked today illustrated at least some of the issues that I have. I've been really struggling to try to understand RAC's finances. I think we have, the oral testimony I received is inconsistent with the written testimony that I received. I'm sure that we can resolve this, but I feel like in terms of communication and educating, at least my office, based on the information I have today, I'm not comfortable voting yes, so I will vote no.
Rubio?
I want to thank the co-directors, as well as Mario, Board Chair Elizabeth Stock, and other guests for today's presentation. It's clear that there's a deep commitment to equity and inclusion in the, in the organization, which is great. My staff and I look more closely, look forward to more closely working with Jeff, with RAC team, and our regional partners and creative communities to ensure that the city's future investments in arts and culture are not only grow and diversify, but that they thrive. I also look forward to more clarity in next time that the report comes up, and for these reasons, I vote aye.
Hardesty?
I want to thank the presenters that came today. I want to make sure that the artists understand that the dialogue and conversation that we've had has absolutely nothing to do with the quality and the expectation that we will support artists throughout the region with RAC resources. Having said that, this is, this is the fourth time that I've had a report that told me absolutely nothing about how we're investing dollars and whether equity that we all talk about so much is really being centered in how we do the work. And I find it disappointing that we continue to ask questions about how public dollars are being spent, and I get the impression that basically, we should mind our own business, because there's a ballot measure that actually funds it, and there's a 1% tax that funds RAC, and therefore, as the council, we should just be grateful that you bring fabulous artists to us. I've never thought that was a good outcome of these conversations. artists to us. I've never thought that was a good outcome of these conversations. And I'm going to vote no, because I want to support a renewed commitment to actually being transparent about how resources raised from city of Portland residents are being utilized to ensure that we all have access to arts and culture in the city of Portland. It says nothing, I have no disrespect for the hardworking people who work for RAC, but it's unacceptable to continue to come to elected leaders and tell them, just trust us, that we are, we're centering equity, we're centering communities of color, and yet we have no pathway and no documentation that shows that is so. So I'm a no vote today. Thank you very much.
Wheeler?
Point of order. And this is a great example of something we've talked about previously, Robert. Can you please define accepting the report? What is implied on the part of the council if we accept the report? It is my understanding that that means we have heard the report, we have asked them to come and report, we have now heard the report. That is my understanding of what accepting the report is. That is correct. And accepting the report does not necessarily, is not necessarily a council endorsement of every single part of the report. If, if a member of council feels that the information provided is insufficient, and is, does not provide information sufficient to constitute a report, then a member of council can vote no on that basis.
Very good. So I'm going to vote aye. But I hope that you have heard my colleagues' concerns. I share them. I'm going to vote aye that we have heard the report, and I assume you've also heard some of the concerns expressed by the city council. I'm not going to vote no, because if I do, then we're going to go through this tedious process of trying to reconcile a tie vote, which I frankly, don't think any of us want to do. So let's pledge to do this.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, before you go, I will point out, Commissioner Hardesty just raised her hand. So I don't know if that's new information.
I'm fine with that. I'll see. Commissioner Hardesty, I mean.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind you that in the last four years, only once did we not accept the report as presented. I will also remind you that if you vote yes today, with the absence of Commissioner Ryan, this report will not pass. And so the only last time this council voted to reject the report was the report that was presented by the OIR group, that was totally unresponsive to the RFP that they were presenting on. And so a vote, if you vote yes, it doesn't matter, the report still will not be accepted, because Commissioner Ryan is not here. And so that, it is what it is.
That's, that's correct, Commissioner Hardesty. And, and we'll just end up leaving it there. We don't have to have an affirmative vote on this. No. Correct? No. The council action would be, the report is not accepted.
Very good. I'll, I'll vote aye, and the rest is up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the report is not accepted. We are adjourned, and I will ask Commissioner Rubio's staff and office and staff to work with RAC to figure out what happens here. It's a unique situation. And I also want to thank staff, I wanted to thank everyone who testified today, and staff who are sticking around. I know it's been a very long day. And we are adjourned for the year.
And we will make sure that you get the report that we sent in November.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Should have already had it.
Recording stopped.